All right, we're gonna call this meeting to order and get started. We apologize for the late start. As a reminder, if you'd like to speak before the council tonight, please complete a blue speaker request form and give it to the clerk prior to the item. Uh, we'll go to item number two, roll call. Mr. Aguilar, please.
Councilmember Yell?
Here.
Councilmember Lorrimore?
President.
Councilmember Tesari?
Here.
Mayor Potemplot?
Here.
Mayor Rigby?
Here.
Item number three, any additions, revisions? Uh, do we have any additions or revisions, Mr. Aguilar?
Yes, I believe staff is requesting to hear item 8.2 prior to 8.1 this evening.
Okay. Is there any additions, revisions from the public?
We received any? We've had no requests.
Mayor, I just want to acknowledge that we have about twenty carpenters union, uh, representatives in the holding pen over there in the conference room, because we only have an eighty-eight percent, eighty-eight person occupancy here. And so I asked them very respectfully nicely if their whole group could go over there, and we'll bring them out for eight point one when that, I think they're here for eight point one. So just-
Great.
Just so you know that they're here for eight point one in a little bit. And I thank you when you, because we have a speaker in there and they can hear us talking. So thank you, guys and ladies in there. I appreciate you helping us out.
Thank you. Are there any additions or revisions from the council? Nope. Do we need, uh, to change an item? Do we need a motion, or?
Uh, just wondering, the number is fine.
Okay. Perfect, thank you. We'll move on to item number four, presentations and announcements. And before I get too far into this, just a reminder, this is my first council meeting, so bear with me. So staff, if I screw anything up, get out of order, um, don't be afraid to throw something except Brian.
He already started twenty minutes late, sorry.
So I'd like to invite the council to join me up front for items four point one through four point three and invite Riverside County Sheriff Stan Sniff to join us at the speaker podium, please. The city is pleased to recognize and commend Riverside County Sheriff Stan Sniff for his commitment to the Riverside County Sheriff's Department in the city of Eastville for the past eleven years. Stan Sniff has served as county's thirteenth sheriff from October 2007 through December 2018, the longest tenure of any of our sheriffs since Ben Clark. Serving what has emerged as our nation's tenth most populous county, he now completes forty-three years of distinguished law enforcement leadership, service to our communities, including thirty-nine years of service to the county of Riverside, as well as earlier retirement from military service as a U.S. Army Colonel. I would like to thank Stan for his commitment to the Riverside County Sheriff's Department and the city of Eastville and wish him the best in his next venture. Thank you so much for all your service. We truly appreciate all that you've done, especially being our contract service and providing the law enforcement services to our community. We truly appreciate all you've done.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Would you like to say?
Well, on behalf of the men and women of the Riverside County Sheriff's Department, and I'm kinda singing to the choir here, because all of you know the quality folks that we've got in our agency all across Riverside County. And as you know, or should know, the office of sheriff is a pretty complex one, because we not only have a patrol function and all our contract partner communities, but we also end up being responsible for running the jail system that serves all agencies, regardless of whether it's the state of California's Highway Patrol, or the allied agencies, anybody that makes arrests utilizes that jail system. And most of you know that's pretty undersized for our size of a county. But I'm also responsible for serving the courts and doing the civil service and protecting each of the some ninety courtrooms across seven thousand three hundred square miles, a county about the size of the state of New Jersey. And then again, I'm also, like most of the sheriffs in California, the coroner public administrator. So it's got a lot of moving parts, a lot of hats, but it's made up of great men and women. And the reason I kinda echo that is because in the last few years, as you know, law enforcement's taken quite a beating across the nation, and the California criminal justice system has kinda been turned on its head here the last few years since 2011. And it's tough to get those great men and women motivated to go out there and do a good job, particularly when it's at risk to their lives. And so I hope all of you, particularly during the holidays, say a prayer to the men and women, not only in the law enforcement, but in the fire service, to go out and keep all our communities safe. Thank you so much for the honor and the recognition. Very much appreciated.
We're gonna go to four point three. We're gonna go out of order just a little bit. We're gonna move to item four point three, recognition of Harupa Community Services District General Manager Todd Corbin, if he can please join us at the speaker's podium. He can come up here. So the city is pleased to recognize and commend General Manager Todd Corbin for his service and commitment to the Harupa Community Services District and the city of Eastville for the past six years. Todd Corbin has served as general manager of the Harupa Community Services District for six years. At J C S D, Todd manages two hundred and twenty-five employees who are responsible for the provision of water and sewer, parks and recreation, as well as streetlight services for both Harupa Valley and Eastville. Todd's dedication and commitment to J C S D and the Eastville community is gone, has not gone unrecognized, as J C S D is one of four agencies in the state of California to receive the national accreditation from the Commission for Accreditation of Park and Recreation Agencies. I would like to thank Todd for his commitment to our community and J C S D and wish him the very best with the city of Riverside as the general manager of the public utilities. Um, just real quick, we've had the opportunity to work on a couple of projects and also to sit on the Parks Commission together, and he's done a great job, so we appreciate what he's done for our community and what he's done specifically for J C S D, and we wish him the best.
Thank you, absolutely.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
One last time. Well, I'd like to thank the council here for the city of Eastville, General Manager Brian, congratulations on your appointment, and also to the community here in Eastville. Uh, we all know this is a special place. I've had the honor to work in this community, as you heard, for the last six years, and also serving the residents of the city of Harupa Valley. And when you get a chance to work in public service, as long as I have and some of us have, and you get a chance to move the needle just a little bit, move the needle a little bit forward so that those who come after you and take your place can move it even further. And this community is in a really good position. I look forward to seeing and sharing your success in the future and wish you all the best.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Todd.
So I think we'll do four point two when he-
Okay.
He's stuck in traffic. He'll be here in a little bit. So we'll just take him out of order when, we'll just stop, we'll just stop the press when he gets here. Thank you, Todd and Stan. Appreciate your service. Todd, don't forget to underground those power lines through our community, too.
So I'm already learning, I forgot the science certificates, so I apologize.
Carry a blue pen at all times.
You're supposed to tell me before, Clint.
If not, Stephen has them, so.
All right, we're gonna move on to item five. I don't see Brian Medina, our student liaison.
He's studying tonight.
Sounds good, that's a great excuse for him not to be here. So we'll forego item five. Moving on to item six, public comments. Any member of the public may address the council on items within the council's subject matter jurisdiction, but which are not listed on this agenda during public comments. However, no action may be taken on matters that are not part of the posted agenda. We request comments made on the agenda be made at the time the item is considered and that comments be limited to three minutes per person. Please address your comments to the council as a whole and do not engage in dialogue with individual council members, city staff, or members of the audience. Mr. Aguilar, do we have any requests to speak?
We have had received no forms for the public comment section of the agenda.
Thank you. We'll move on to item number seven, consent calendar. All matters on the consent calendar are considered routine and are to be approved with one motion unless a council member, staff member, or member of the public requests separate action on a specific item. Mr. Aguilar, is there any items to be pulled from staff or any members of the public?
We've had no requests.
Council, would you like to pull any items?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Before, before your motion, I would like to pull item seven point fifteen, please.
Okay. Okay, then the remainder of those.
Second.
Councilmember Yell?
Aye.
Councilmember Lorrimore?
Aye.
Councilmember Tesari?
Aye.
Mayor Potemplot?
Yes.
Mayor Rigby?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Mr. Reyna, if you will, please, on seven point one five, contract renewal of ECON Solutions for Economic Development Consulting Services.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. Uh, this particular contract is for ECON Solutions. It's for a period of eighteen months, and the reason why we're doing eighteen months is to get it caught up with the fiscal year ended. This is gonna go through January of 2019 through the end of June of this year and then continue on to the next fiscal year. Um, and so this contract is for a one-year period and not exceeds sixty thousand dollars. Um, we do have Barry Foster in the audience as well. If there's any questions directly related to the contract, he can answer those as well. Um, so he's there in the audience.
They provide a lot of support services, like earlier this week, they did a presentation to the industrial businesses on our behalf, um, to work with the brokers in the industrial businesses, and they really supported us on a number of initiatives, all with our local development community, as well as our regional development community, and at the ICSC conference and bringing, they've been very helpful in a number of initiatives to bring many projects and developers and businesses to the city of Eastville. So they've helped us with a lot of data and statistics and analysis, and, um, they've been a very great support, and we look forward to working with our economic development manager to continue to grow our revenue streams and help our businesses be successful in Eastville.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Uh, I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Aguilar, please.
Councilmember Yell?
Aye.
Councilmember Lorrimore?
Aye.
Councilmember Tesari?
Aye.
Mayor Potemplot?
Yes.
Mayor Rigby?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Moving on to item eight, public hearings. We have two public hearings, hearing items tonight, as a reminder. If you would like to speak on these items, please complete a blue speaker form, and the clerk will call you up when the public hearings are opened. As discussed earlier in the agenda, we are gonna move eight point two first. Mr. Jones, will you please proceed with item eight point two?
Yes, I'm gonna have our consultant planner, Eric Norris, present on this project on behalf of the city and the developer.
Mayor and council, thank you very much. Yeah, Eric Norris, your planning director, wanted to give you a brief presentation. Uh, I think we're looking at probably continuing this item until the next meeting, but since we're all here, just to give us all a common frame of reference. And before I move on from this slide, I want to recognize the person who actually has done all the work on that, Peter Miniger, who's sitting over here to my left. Having him here also means that if there's any even simple questions about the project, we can get accurate answers. So the proposed project, item eight point two, is a self-storage facility, and as is often the case, there are a number of different pieces associated with that. We're gonna talk about two of those tonight. The remaining two down at the bottom there are being retained by the planning commission. They'll act on them or not, depending on the council's action on the first two. So the first two items are amending the general plan land use map, which is changing the planned land use on this parcel, and changing the zoning, basically, to match that new general plan designation. What's shown up here in the blue, gray, and green is the development part of the project. I'll explain that in a minute, but then there's the corner parcel here, down in the lower left-hand corner, which is part of the overall land use planning component that you're looking at tonight. So the site is at the far west side of Eastville, it's at the northeast corner of Walters and Hellman. Uh, if you've been out there, you know that on the south side of Walters is the new Rondo Elementary School, which is under construction, surrounded on two sides in Eastville by existing neighborhoods, and then to the west is the city of Chino. And again, the entire project area for the general plan amendment and zone change is outlined in red. The self-storage project is outlined in blue, and then there's that parcel at the corner which is not being proposed to develop at this time. So we went out there a few days ago, took some pictures, if you haven't been out there recently, just to familiarize everyone with sort of the condition of the property. It's been used historically for businesses associated with the prior dairy industry, and there's still a lot of sort of remnants of that trucking business that has been going on there for a long time, uh, still remaining in there in, on the parcel. On the south side, just a couple of quick pictures, and the aerial on the left is a little bit out of date, but again, that's the elementary school that's under construction. Uh, since that aerial was taken, they've gone vertical, and that's the picture on the right-hand side there. So the two components, first of all, that we're looking at tonight, the general plan amendment proposes to change this from residential, it's in our low-density land use category, which is actually lower density than most of the single-family. Our typical single-family neighborhoods here in Eastville are in the medium-density category, so this is currently designated lower density than that. So the proposal is to change that from residential to commercial retail, and again, that covers the entire project area here. And then to change the zoning from the current agricultural zoning, which again is a holdover from its historic use, to our commercial C-one CP zone. Uh, this project is inside the Chino Airport influence area, which is just a few miles to the west. Uh, the project went to the Riverside County Airport Land Use Commission, they found it consistent with the airport land use compatibility plan, which seeks to make sure that things that are happening under the flight path are appropriately located. On November twentieth, the planning commission held a public hearing on all of this, all four of the items, these two items plus the two that they're retaining. They recommended denial of these two items and continued their discussion of the remaining two, pending the council's decision on the general plan and zone change. Their concern, as expressed at the meeting, was the fact that this is a fairly major change, going from residential to commercial. Uh, the neighbors in the area, they felt, were not well-served by making that kind of a change in land use. They had also received a number of emails and letters from some of the residents in the surrounding area expressing concern about traffic, crime, the scale of the buildings, and so on. And I think members of this council have received a lot of those same communications. So as I mentioned, they continued the other two items, which are a major development review, that's the process we use to review architecture, landscaping, site layout, and so on, and a conditional use permit, which is required for a self-storage facility in our commercial zones. That allows us to put time-of-day operational restrictions and so on on them. But those two items have been retained and will stay at the planning commission. In terms of environmental compliance, we prepared an initial study and came up with a mitigated negative declaration, which is a long way of saying we looked at the potential for impacts of the project and found that there weren't any that we couldn't reduce to levels that we, that we can accept. Uh, that circulated for roughly twenty-one days. We received comment letters, all of those comments have been responded to, and that document and all those comments or responses are in your package. Should you wish to make a decision on the project, that sequoia document is ready for you to use. We sent notices out within six hundred feet of the project site, about a hundred and four of those, a hundred and three to property owners, we sent one to the city of Chino, and as you know, we've received a number of comments back. Now, after the planning commission meeting on December fifth, the applicant held a public meeting here in the council chambers. They invited those same residents to come here, learn about the project. The applicant, Mr. Gossett, is here tonight, I think he, if you have any questions about how that meeting went, he can tell you. Uh, Peter was here, just taking notes. Says we had about twenty, twenty-five people here, roughly evenly divided between those in favor of and opposed to the project. Cordial meeting, at which a lot of, it was just more of an informational discussion, so. But again, Mr. Gossett is here, if you have any questions about that. So staff's recommendation tonight for the city council is that you open the public hearing, I believe we do have speakers here who are here to speak tonight, receive that public testimony, and then at that point, you can go a number of ways. If you'd like to, you can continue this, this item, to a date certain, in which case you probably want to leave the hearing open, in case there are folks who come to that second meeting so that they can also speak. You also have the ability tonight, if you wish, to deny the project or continue it. So at that point, I'll end my presentation. If you have any questions, I'll be able to answer them to the best of my ability, and again, accurate, full, complete answers will come from Mr. Miniger.
Thank you, Mr. Norris. Council, do you have any questions for staff? No questions? If we have no questions, we will go ahead and open the public hearing. Um, as Mr. Norris mentioned, we will go ahead and hear, um, those public comments that are here this evening, and I think we'll move forward with that right now. Mr. Aguilar, has anyone requested to speak on this item?
Uh, yes, we received two public comment cards, the first one being from Jack Gerard.
Please.
Mayor, city council, um, I'm Jack Gerard, president of the Harse Side Homeowners Association. Would you mind putting the first slide back up or two that shows the neighborhood? We're the neighborhood that's most affected by this, and even though we were given a short notice, nineteen people wrote letters, either from Harse Side or Avalon Lea. I don't believe that our community's been given enough time to get this project and understand what's gonna happen. I'm the one who organized the meeting here in this chamber last Wednesday with the builder, give the builder an opportunity to speak to our residents, and even in spite of that, speaking to the homeowners, everyone that I've spoken to is still opposed to the project for various reasons. On a personal level, this affects my home, which is in the upper-left corner of the project. They were planning on leaving the six-foot wall right behind my house and having fourteen twelve-foot U-Haul trucks parked right behind my six-foot wall where my kids play in the backyard. That's my biggest contention, plus the school's on the other side. So a lot of our residents are here tonight. I want to yield the floor to Courtney, who's also got a blue card in, and let her put some energy out on the project. The last thing I'd like to say, if a motion that you would either deny or continue, to give us more time as a community to understand and learn about the project. They promised a ten-foot wall would be built, it was a bullet on a PowerPoint. I'd like to see it on a set of plans personally, so that we know that that's gonna take place. There's an easement that happens on the north side of the project, I'd like to see a lock on the gate. We can't put a lock on it, because your municipalities need to get in there and get to the utilities. Hopefully, the city can put one on it to break away something else, so that people that are coming from outside of our communities aren't tempted to use that easement for storage or to park overnight while they're waiting for the storage facility to open. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Mr. Aguilar, are there any further speaker cards? Yes, our next public comment speaker is Courtney Leach.
Good evening. Thank you very much for your time in allowing me to come and present some concerns.
If you can do us a favor and just speak in, just, it's recorded and there's also people in the other room.
Is this better?
Perfect, thank you.
All right, sorry about that. Um, so thank you again for letting me come up here and give, just share a couple of our concerns and be able to listen to a couple of things that are on our mind about this project. Um, so I just want to let you guys know as well, I also, with Jack, I also live in Hurse Side Lane, so this does also truly affect myself. I'm here on behalf of my family, who I have two younger daughters, one who's eight and one who's nine months old, which is going to be going to this school, that's gonna be considered across the street from this project. Um, six of my neighbors are also present, whom we all have made reservations for our kids in order to be present, in order to demonstrate our overall opposition to this project. The things I just want to bring to the table also is my husband is in law enforcement. Um, he's currently works with Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department, he's been in the department for several years. I myself also come from a family of retired deputies, so my personal opinion, and just want to throw that out there, is the legal stuff that can happen. So some of the things, for example, um, you know, there's disturbances that come, disturbance calls that come in, drugs, theft, burglary, squatting happens, there are people that would live in these, I'm sorry, live in these locations without us knowledge of them. Um, we do not know what's in these, um, storage facilities, um, so again, that can also lead to other things, unmentionable things we don't want to discuss, um, public urination, defecation, um, just overall things, again, being across the street from a school poses a huge, huge liability and a huge, honestly, just issue and danger. Other things listed was just basically, um, just theft, potentially of local private residents. I know that Jack talked about the wall being at a certain height. Um, again, if they can't get access to that, it's kind of an open door of saying, wow, this is kind of cool, can't get in here, but let me go check out what's surrounding. Um, definitely want to open that door. Um, there's also issue of the increase of volume of vehicle traffic, um, which specifically large trucks and other vehicles, which can lead to additional congestion and increase in overall pollutants, and above all, increased danger for our kids and families that will be walking their kids to school, to and from school. The other thing, too, I want to mention is, I, we were one of the first homeowners in this community, and we were also the impression that the zone would remain as residential or, and/or agricultural, um, so seeing it being zoned to commercial is a little bit also concerning as well. So I just wanted to shed light on a couple of those things, so thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any further comment cards at this time?
That concludes public comment.
So I think we will go ahead and leave public, the public hearing open, but is there any, uh, questions? Let me back up, I apologize. I know that the applicant is here, would the applicant like to speak on this?
Good evening, council, Garrett Gossett, um, applicant for the project. We appreciate the time that you guys have put in reviewing this project. Over the last year, we put a tremendous amount of time and resources working with planning staff to look through the site and come up with a project that we feel could serve the community well. We have strong logic in support of the project, we've got a lot of data to address neighbors' concerns, we've hosted community outreach, and we're still working on doing that. We've been able to gather some support for the project, and we ask that you continue it tonight to the January meeting, to give us the opportunity to work with the community and see if we can address those concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. So... Do we have any other questions or comments from the council? Ms. Yell?
I have a question for city staff. I, we, we have approximately nine percent or ten percent of land, remaining lands that we have in the city, and I- And I have asked this before, and I do want to know, is this the best use of our land? Like, what else can we do with this piece of land instead of building storage facilities? And I know it is within the Chino Airport influence area. So what can we do with this piece of land, or is this really our only option?
Eric, if you want to answer that. We did do some financial analysis of comparing this to low-density residential as a, as opposed to what the revenue would be generated for the city with a self-storage unit on it, I believe. And if we don't have that ready tonight, we could.
Did you have a chance to look at that?
Yeah, in terms of revenues to the city, we can get back to you on, on that. I think in general, the initial numbers I've seen, the improvements that would go on the property as a mini-storage would be more than the improvements for housing. So the tax base would be a little bit higher from that standpoint. So, what can be done with the property? There's, I mean, there's many things that could be done. I think there's a question in front of me now, should it be housing, should it be retail? Honestly, it's probably not a really good retail corner as a retail corner. That zoning is being put here only because we need that to make the mini-storage work. There's another larger retail site just south of this on Helman that would probably be a better retail location on the south side of Chandler. On the residential side, and we've met over a number of years with a variety of parties interested in building housing on the site, none of them have come back. So, you know, it would be theoretically possible to build housing like is around it, which would require a slight upzoning. It probably doesn't make sense, honestly, to develop it as residential at the density that it's zoned. There's a lot of improvements that need to go onto the site that it probably just doesn't pencil to build a few homes on it. And even if you increase the density, you don't get enough homes to really get kind of the economy of scale that you need to make it work. Not to say that it couldn't be done, but it's a small, small piece. We typically don't have small residential developers here in town. So we don't have the folks who are, in some communities, there are. In other places that I've worked, you have those guys, that, you know, the local home builder. We don't really have them here, so it's a problem finding that person with the desire and the funding to build housing on the site. So yeah, you definitely have options. The question for, for you is you've been presented with this option, and does the council feel that's the appropriate one for this location?
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Plot?
This may be, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This may be a question for the applicant. The hours of operation, I understand, closes at seven o'clock, is that correct? Several storage facilities that I've attended, worked with kind of around the state is, a lot of times they'll say it's closed at seven, but they can still be allowed to enter into the units. What is it, like, a hard close, like no one can enter in? Or can they still enter in after seven o'clock, just not bring their trucks through?
We intend to have office hours that operate from nine to five and gate hours from seven to seven. That means those gates are locked and non-accessible outside of those hours, seven to seven.
Thank you. Any other questions from council?
I do have a question for the applicant. If we are going to continue this item, it needs to be continued to a date certain. Given the holiday, our first meeting is going to be on January 9th, and but given the holiday, I don't know if that's enough time to have enough outreach, or would you prefer the 23rd?
I prefer the 23rd, please.
Okay. I would, if we have no further discussion, I would like to make a motion to continue, keep the hearing open, but continue this item to the January 23rd meeting.
Second.
Mr. Agler.
Councilmember Yell?
Aye.
Councilmember Lormar?
Aye.
Councilmember Tesari?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Plot?
Yes.
Mayor Rigby?
Aye.
Motion passes five-zero.
Once again, just as a reminder, for those of you that are here for this item this evening, that means that this item is still open for public comment. So if you want to come back on January 23rd, is that when it was set? January 23rd, you're, you're welcome to come back, and it'll be, the public hearing will continue then.
Mayor, item 4.2 attendance is in, in the House, and so if you would like to go back to 4.2, we can recognize the esteemed Bill Newberry.
Definitely will do so. We will do item 4.2 if the council will join me at the speaker's podium, and if Mr. Bill Newberry will join us.
And just so, for the carpenters union that sit back in the conference room, we're going to be hearing, we're going to be hearing the, the Merge project right after we do this presentation. So if you would like to make your way into the council chambers, we have space in here now for you.
The city is pleased to recognize and commend Mr. Bill Newberry for his service and commitment to the Crono-Norco Unified School District in the city of Eastville for the last eight years. Bill was on the original Eastville incorporation committee, and in 2011 was able to work with the new city of Eastville to change the name of Cleveland Avenue to Scholar Way and get banners of college-bound students to be hung along the light poles. Through his passion, dedication, and commitment, Bill has helped Crono-Norco Unified School District be named one of the top four districts in the United States and ranked one of the seven safest school districts in the United States. Bill was instrumental in the development of the Eastville STEM Academy, opening of Ronald Reagan Elementary, and Eastville's newest elementary school under construction, which is Rondo Elementary, which will benefit Eastville students for many years to come. I would like to thank Bill for his commitment to the Crono-Norco Unified School District as well as our city. And it says a lot, as you see, that our, our school district is among the safest, not only in the state but in the nation, and Bill has done a great job. I've also had the pleasure to work with Bill on a number of things, sit on the Eastville Schools Committee together, work on the Measure GG together a little bit, and he's done a great job. He truly has a, a strong desire for our youth and our community and to see them do better. So thank you so much for all that you've done, Bill. We really appreciate it.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you. Take a quick photo. All right, we want to get together, one, two, three. Back a little bit, right. One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you.
You guys got it.
This Monday. Huh?
Yeah, okay.
All right. You sure?
Yeah, no, no. It's dangerous. Thanks, Bill.
Appreciate that, sir. Appreciate that, I saw the note, appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Looking forward to reading it.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Mr. Newberry, with being a parent and having two of my kids in the school district, and I truly appreciate all that you've done. Once again, you've, you've been very instrumental in what has happened here in Eastville with a lot of the schools that we have, especially the STEM Academy. That's exciting and something that we're very proud of, so thank you.
He was also instrumental in, in getting Scholar Way named Scholar Way. So if you, if you have ever heard that story, if you haven't heard it, you should sit down and, and hear that story from Bill. He did some finagling to get that Scholar Way, and hopefully someday we can have a Scholar Trail on Scholar Way to connect all along there. That's, that'd be a really great way to connect our schools and our parks. So, great job, Bill, and all the service you've done for the school district and our community, so, thank you.
So, I think it's sad that he spearheaded the 5G for the area too, so, which is soon going to happen, so, thanks again, Bill. We appreciate it. I'm sure there's more. Anybody?
Thank you, Bill. We'll move on to item 8.1, PLN 18-20026, the Merge Retail Center and Industrial Park. Mr. Jones, if you can introduce this item, please.
I'm going to have our consulting planning director, Eric Norris, present on this project tonight. So this has been a, a long project in the making and a, a very collaborative project with the developer and the city going back and forth, raising the expectations for what could be done on this site with all the constraints. And so I'm going to have Eric share some of this, but we, it's been a very collaborative process between the city and the developer.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, thank you. Again, Eric Norris, your planning director. And yeah, as Brian mentioned, we usually don't talk too much about what things look like when they started, but this is far, far better than what it started off as. So let's not go too far down that road. I did want to mention a few other people. Kanika Kith, who actually did all the staff work on this, is not feeling well tonight. She's at home, so I'll be making the presentation. To my left, we have Ross Geller, the environmental consultant who prepared that voluminous EIR that I'm sure you've read, all the technical appendices and everything. And we have the applicant and his team, Ray Pulverini, led by Ray Pulverini, they're all here tonight as well. So as with, as I mentioned, many of our projects, it, it's a rather simple idea, which is, let's develop something, but there's a lot of different pieces that go along with it. The major piece here at the top of the screen is what we call a major development review. And again, that's where we look at the layout of the buildings, the architecture, the landscaping, all those design features that give us quality projects here in town, that, that we've been working to, you know, as Brian mentioned, raise the bar with every single project. There's a total of fourteen buildings in the project. There's a, a couple of pads which are to be developed later, so, you'll, or the planning commission, rather, will see those at a future time, assuming that this is approved. Proceeding that, actually, and maybe a little bit out of order here, there is certification of a final environmental impact report. We'll talk a little bit more about that. And again, we have our consultant here to answer any, any more detailed questions about that document. So in terms of the, sort of the pieces again of the application, there is a general plan amendment here, and that is, we'll talk about that in a second. There's a change of zone, which basically makes the zoning and the general plan consistent. There are four conditional use permits. Two of those are for sale of alcohol in a grocery store and at a gas station convenience store, and then two drive-throughs. One for a drugstore pickup and one for a coffee shop. And maybe I will mention just one thing. When this project initially came and had, was it five or seven drive-throughs?
Nine.
Nine, okay. Not quite that many, but far more than this. There's a variance, which, for those who are around, at the time the Walmart project was approved, is very similar in, in its need. There are areas where we can't provide landscaping in order to provide aircraft emergency landing areas, so there's a variance needed to allow the project to proceed without meeting that standard. And then finally, there's a tentative parcel map to divide the project into parcels. So here's our location. This is off, again, on, on the west side of town, but on the northern, the northwest part. It's outlined here in red, and it's that bright green color. It's still being used for agricultural purposes now. I've highlighted a couple of other things. Well, shown to the right of the project, to its east, is the Sondaro Residential Project, which was under construction when this aerial was taken. So that, that's coming out of the ground, and you'll see that project being developed over the next year or two. South of it is the approved but not yet built Walmart project. And then on the other side of the street, kind of that darker brown color with the, the vertical lines in it, those are the cattle awnings, that, that's the existing Dyke Dairy, which is one of two that are still in operation here in town. And then south of that is the Campus Industrial Park. I've also highlighted on here in the light blue dashed line, that's the county line. So that divides Riverside County from San Bernardino County. Just north of this project, across that line, is the city of Ontario. And I'll mention that we went off, went out there back in October and met with residents of that, of that project. They very generously brought us into their home and gave us a chance to talk to them and hear their concerns about the project, which resulted in changes to the project that are reflected in what's being presented to you tonight. So a few photos here. Again, I was mentioning that, that kind of dividing line between Ontario and Eastville. Right, right down the middle of that, more or less, is a flood control channel. To the left of that, just beyond that gate there that you see, is a multi-use trail in the city of Ontario. And then to the left of that are the, the existing homes. And then everything on the right, that bright green color, that's the project site. This is looking at the project site from Limonite, and you can see on the right-hand side there, that's maybe a month or so old. That's the models for the, the first set of homes going up in the Sondaro Project. So you get a feel for the proximity of those homes to the project site here. And in the background, if you can see, is a row of homes. That's, again, on the other side of the county line over in the city of Ontario. So let me run briefly through the project, and I'll just say upfront that the, you know, the heavy lifting in terms of working on all the design details, something that we've been working collaboratively with the applicant on for a long time. The planning commission looked at all this in detail. There are some changes that we'll talk about that were recommended by the planning commission, but basically, they, they liked the project as presented to them. So this is an aerial perspective view. So off on the left-hand side, that's Archibald going up to the north, and then on the right-hand side, that's Limonite. So the way the project lays out is basically, I'm sorry, the area down along Limonite is the retail portion of it, and then north of that is generally the light industrial portion. The general plan amendment shows up here. Currently, the site is entirely designated light industrial in the general plan. And what you're seeing on the right-hand side, the proposed general plan designation is applying that red color, that's the retail, general plan designation, on the retail portion. And that jog in there basically reflects where the, the buildings are. The retail portion doesn't, it's not a clean line, it's a little bit broken up in the way it's designed. The zoning on the site is currently agricultural. When the county adopted the, the existing general plan designations, which predate incorporation, they left the zoning in place, the old ag zoning, so that's still there. So the, the rezoning proposal would apply light industrial and retail zoning to the property, matching the new general plan designation. This is a slightly different view of the project. This is a, a plan view. So again, you're seeing the northern portion of the project, the, the larger buildings up there, those are the light industrial, and then down below is the retail component. And as I mentioned, you can see a couple of green areas on there. There's nothing proposed on those at this time. The environmental document does consider that something would be developed there, so assuming that we don't bring any use that wasn't considered in the EIR, they can come back in and get approved by the planning commission without the need to go through additional environmental analysis. So let's talk briefly about some conditions at kind of this level that came from the planning commission. These, again, were recommendations for changes. On that northern boundary that divides this property from the city of Ontario, they recommended building a solid block wall. And we say vine pockets, and what those are is at the bottom of the wall, because the wall's going to be put at the property line, and they won't be able to get to the other side to maintain it. So we didn't want to put a landscape strip back there. So we would put a hole in the bottom of the wall, plant vines on the Eastville side, and kind of poke them through, and then they grow up on the other side of the wall and make it look more attractive. And that was one of those things that came, actually, both of those issues, the wall and the landscaping, came out of our conversation with the residents on, in Ontario, who wanted to have a wall, and they wanted it to be landscaped, so. Off on the right-hand side, the commission recommended planting more trees along that boundary. There are also some recommendations about those buildings, which we'll talk about in a minute or two, that go adjacent to the Sondaro Project. Off on the left-hand side, there's a proposal to build a left-turn pocket. So as you're coming southbound on Archibald, you'll be able to get into a left-turn pocket and then turn left into that first driveway. You could also turn right into it if you're going north on Archibald, but you could not turn left out of it to go southbound on Archibald. The commission was concerned that that shouldn't happen until Archibald is widened in Ontario. happen until Archibald is widened in Ontario. So that was a recommendation from them. Then the box around the gas station portion, that's the gas station that they're proposing, not quite at the corner, it's a little bit up from the corner. The Commission wanted that to be flipped, to put the gas station on the street. What we're trying to do there is hold a more consistent street scape with buildings, rather than having all the parking out in front. It also helps, not entirely screen, but soften the view of the gas pumps, which the Commission thought was a good idea. And then in recognition of one of the newer trends in transportation, they wanted to have somewhere on the site some designated parking for electric scooters. So that's a recommendation from your Commission. So let's run through the stores here. Start off with the major grocery store and what we call the Shops 1 Building. And that is, as it says up on here, proposed to be a Sprouts. So that was one thing that, actually, going back several years, that staff has been working with the developer to bring a high-end grocer in, and they were able to get Sprouts here, which was a major coup. So that is part of the project. As I mentioned, Sprouts wanted to sell alcohol, requires a conditional use permit, as any sale of alcohol does here in town, so that's one of your conditional use permits. To the left of that is a proposed drugstore, which is shown in these exhibits here. And in the top exhibit, and we'll show that a little bit, in a little bit more detail in another slide, is a plaza area between the drugstore and the supermarket. That was originally proposed to be parking, and they proposed instead to replace that with a very attractive landscaped public plaza area. So we think that's a really positive addition to the project. Oh, and before I leave that, the pharmacy is proposing a drive-up pickup window, and again, that's a drive-through use. That's one of the CUPs that you're being asked to approve. Shops 2 is a multi-tenant building that's down on the Limonite frontage. If you can see it in the inset drawing up there, it's the blue building here. The Commission liked the way this building looked and had no recommendations for any changes to this one. And here's a highlight of some of the outdoor amenities already mentioned. Up in the kind of upper right-hand corner there is the outdoor plaza area, and we do have a condition that requires the developer to install all the pretty things that they're showing in their pictures here, so that we get that from day one. And then down in the lower right-hand corner is a very large plaza area, which will be built adjacent to the pad building there, which is proposed to be a Starbucks. So we'll have a Starbucks with a very large outdoor seating area. And here's another view of that outdoor area, which they envision as a place which could be occasionally used as a venue for gatherings, small music events, and so on. This is the gas station convenience store. Now, this is the prior proposal, so if you see down in the inset drawing here, it's a little hard to see, but this reflects the old layout, so that's been flipped. The gas station now is along the street, and that should be shown, that's shown in here. So on the left, you can see the gas station, the pumps, more or less in the middle, and the gas station to the right, away from the street. They've changed that, the gas station now on the street. And we were very pleased that they were able to make that work, basically with very few changes to the overall plan. It didn't affect anything else in the project. Now, in making that change, there were a couple of things that came up in working on sort of the details. Staff is recommending, if you can see up here in the upper-left drawing, there's a landscaped planter. We want to have a pedestrian pathway integrated in that. One thing that we and the Planning Commission pay a lot of attention to is pedestrian access through these projects, so we want to encourage that and make those areas, those features as attractive and usable as possible, and we feel that's one way to do that. And then the back of that building now, since it's gonna be more visible, because you're gonna see that as you're driving by it on Limonite, we'd like them to add some additional awnings along that Archibald-facing elevation. They have some green screens there, which are the trellises that they, vines are planted at the bottom of, then they grow up. We like those, but we like a little bit more detailing on the back of the building as well. And that's consistent with what we've done on other projects. The Shops building on the Sumner frontage that the Eastvale Marketplace has those on the back as well. It provides more shadows, a little more detail, makes the building look more interesting from the street. This is the, again, the Starbucks building, that's Pad 1, that's at the very corner there of Limonite and Archibald. That's that, the pad that would have that large outdoor seating area, and the Planning Commission had no additional recommendations there. There are two industrial buildings facing Archibald, that's what these would look like. Then there are what we call industrial buildings 3, 4, and 5. Those are more or less internal to the project, those are the largest of the buildings. And then buildings 6, 7, and 8 are the ones that march down that eastern boundary, and they did have some recommendations there. And I'll also note that these drawings don't show one thing. And I was talking, again, briefly about changes in the project, because I like to focus on what's in front of us, rather than what was kind of in the rearview mirror. But these buildings are arranged, and you can see it a little bit if you look up in the upper, the inset drawing at the upper right. These are arranged so that the loading docks are facing north and south. They're not facing to the east toward the homes. That was intentional. An earlier version of this had the loading docks facing east, and we said, uh-uh, that's not gonna work. So they came back and redesigned it like this. Now, in addition to this, and not shown on these drawings, there is going to be a 10-foot-high screen wall. So down in this bottom right-hand corner, there's gonna be a 10-foot-high screen wall that comes off of the corner of that building, running north and south, so you're not gonna see that truck parked there, unless you're directly in front of the loading dock looking at it. So that's both visual, and it helps keep any noise that's happening inside the project. Then there's, again, this building, the same issue, well, actually, on both of these buildings, the Commission wanted that frontage, the side that's facing into the Sndero Project, to look better, so they want an improved elevation there. So we can definitely work with the applicant there. And then the same thing on buildings 6 and 7. And on this building, once again, you see that little notch in the corner of it, in that little blue building up in the upper right-hand corner. Again, there'll be a screen wall that will shield views of that loading dock, which, again, has been rotated, so it's not facing east, it's facing north. That's the development part of it. Let's talk about the use permit real briefly. First one we'll go through is the off-site sale of alcohol in the grocery store. These are the basic conditions here, these are fairly standard. We always work with our police department on developing these conditions, so these are, again, fairly standard for other grocery stores, very similar to what was done for Smart and Final, Target, and so on. Off-site alcohol sales in the convenience store. Again, this would be the Chevron store. These are hours of operation, limitations, requirements to have a certain number of people onsite, limitations on where they can sell and display the alcohol, security cameras, and so on. And again, this is consistent with what we've done for other similar uses. The Starbucks, as I mentioned, requires a conditional use permit because it has a drive-through component. The main thing we look at there is stacking, and they have designed a Starbucks which has enough stacking. That's the number of cars that can be waiting in line without starting to now overflow out into the parking lot and affect parking operations. We have a pretty good idea of what a Starbucks stacking in Eastvale looks like, so they've designed it to meet that worst-case scenario. And then the drugstore drive-through conditional use permit, again, is basically a drive-through pharmacy, so it's not a drive-through in the classic sense, it's more of a pickup window. There are two lanes proposed for that. And again, there are conditions that are in the package, typical to this kind of thing. We've done these before, never had a problem with a drugstore drive-through pickup window. And then the last, actually, almost the last application, as I mentioned, is the variance. Now, shown in green here are areas that needed to be set aside to meet requirements due to where the project sits in proximity to the Chinatown Airport. And the idea here is that if an aircraft is in distress, either coming in, going out of the airport, they will have a place to ditch their aircraft. What that means, though, is you can't have things sticking up out of the ground. Everything in those green areas has to be four feet high or shorter, so you can't have trees, can have light standards, but trees is the critical thing here, because that means that you can't have shade on the parking lot in those areas. So that's where the variance comes in. The finding is that there is a circumstance unique to this project, which is its location under the airport flight path, so we would give them a variance and not require them to meet that. Now, in exchange for that, they will be planting, the trees that would go in this area will be planted elsewhere on the site, so we don't lose, the total number of trees stays the same, they just move around. We've required them to provide some additional landscaping right at the entrance off of Archibald, to make up for the fact that we can't plant sort of specimen-themed trees, so we'll get some other landscaping features there. And we've required the landscaping along that kind of east-west, that line that's running across, which is one of the more major accessways into the project for the retail component in particular. We paid more attention there to the landscaping and the design of the buildings, so that as people are coming in, going to the grocery store, the drugstore, whatever, they won't feel like they're riding or driving down the backside of an industrial park. So we did pay more attention to the elevations there. And then the final application is the tentative parcel map, and this is, again, simply to divide the property into parcels for lease or sale. And you can see here the line dividing sort of the north and south portions of the project corresponds to the general plan, to the zoning, to the layout of the buildings, so that they can have individual parcels underneath those buildings. And last but not least, we have SEQA. A project of this size raised the potential for having significant impacts on the environment, so we prepared an environmental impact report that looked at all the topics which are highlighted on the slide up here. Went out for public review. That review period ended on November 2nd. We got a number of comments. Those are all responded to in your package tonight. So the draft EIR that went out for review, plus those comments and responses, combine into a final environmental impact report. Of the impact, or the different topical areas that we looked at, most of those, we have ways to reduce those impacts to a level of less than significant, which means something that we can accept. Those are highlighted on the slide here. There were three that can't be mitigated, where we simply, there is no way to make those impacts at acceptable levels: traffic, air quality, and greenhouse gas emissions. So in response to that, should you wish to approve the project, we have written a statement of overriding considerations, which highlights the reasons why the project could be approved, accepting those impacts. You're saying, we want to get, we want the project, we want these benefits, and we'll accept those impacts to get these benefits. These are the overriding considerations. And again, we can answer any questions we have at all on how that process works, or the findings that are involved in adopting this. So I'll conclude with just a summary of the Commission's recommendations, which are fairly straightforward. They recommended approval of the general plan amendment, zone change, the parcel map, the major development review with conditions as noted, the variance and the tentative parcel map. They also recommended approval of all the conditional use permits for the drive-throughs and the alcohol sales. In terms of order of action, as I mentioned earlier on, the first thing you need to do should you wish to approve the project is certify the final environmental impact report. Then we'll just go through in order, general plan, change of zone, et cetera, is on the slide up here. And that concludes my presentation. I guess there's a black slide at the end of that. We'll leave this one up here. So I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have. As I mentioned, we have the applicant here, you probably want to have him say a word or two, and we do have Mr. Geller, who wrote that environmental impact report, if you have questions on anything in that document. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Norris. Are there any questions from Council for staff?
Mr. Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Has any of the, has the City of Ontario ever requested input from residents of Eastvale on any of their projects that are abutting in Eastvale?
I'm not sure, not that I know of. I will mention that one of the folks who was at that meeting was an Ontario council member, and she fared with me, which I thought was a nice statement, that this was the first time she had ever seen an adjoining city come into the neighboring city and ask for input from their residents. So she was very pleased to see that, and I was proud to have Eastvale be the first agency that did that in her 20-some years of experience.
Yeah, I think it's a good precedent to set. Another question I had was, would it be permissible, should this project be approved, to have a condition where we have, say, three or four of the cameras that are currently around the city actually put up in, on that site?
We can condition the site and the developer to put cameras up on this site and provide security that we have access to, and that is something we could ask the developer to do, to acknowledge and volunteer to do. It's a benefit to their site to make their site even safer, and I'm sure the applicant, for minimal cost, to enhance the safety of their project might acknowledge that. So I see him shaking his head up and down, so maybe that would be yes.
Yeah, I think it's relatively inexpensive, and I would prefer, though, that they specifically use the kind we already use, so that we can access them remotely, like we do the ones we have.
We can collaborate on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from the Council? With seeing no further questions from the Council, we're gonna go ahead and open up the public hearing. Mr. Aguilar, has anyone requested to speak on this item?
Yes, we received four public comment cards, the first one being from Jacob Klipses.
Good evening, Council members. My name is Jacob Klipses. I'm a representative of the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters, with roughly 10,000 members in the Island Empire area alone. Tonight, we've come here to ask that you approve this project. The developers made a commitment to the community of Eastvale, a commitment through a project labor agreement that will ensure good-paying union jobs for the tradespeople that live in and around Eastvale, not only in the initial construction of the project, but also throughout the tenant improvement process as well, not to mention the long-term jobs with the ongoing operation of the facility once it's open. So with that, tonight, we just asked that the Council approve this project, and moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Aguilar, any further?
Yes, the next speaker is Juan Munoz.
Good evening. I am also a business representative with the Carpenters. Listening to the project, it sounds like they crossed, they checked all the boxes for a good project. They've answered questions as far as good-paying jobs, a revenue stream for the city, better street improvements. I think he checked all the boxes. I ask you to consider an approval for this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Thomas Ruiz.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, Council members. Congratulations on your appointments and your election. My name is Thomas Ruiz. I'm representative of the Labor's International Union, and we're here tonight to support the project as well. A lot of our members and folks that work in construction travel long distances to find work. This project provides that opportunity for a lot of residents and our members. We represent about 4,500 members that live in and around this area, to work close to home, which gives them the opportunity to get home sooner to their children and participate in community activities. This project also, as you can see, enhances that area dramatically through infrastructure, storm drains, sewers, curb gutter, and brings tremendous economic opportunity to the residents and to members of our organization. One thing I would like to say, too, is when we think about construction, we often forget about the apprenticeship programs that construction provides and the second- often forget about the apprenticeship programs that the construction provides and the secondary education. Not everyone's able to go to a four-year university and accumulate debt. The trades provide the opportunity for folks to learn a skill, have a paying, a good-paying job that provides healthcare, benefits, and a pension. And so projects like these are vital to continue those type of programs, and we're thankful for the commitment of Orbis Real Estate to commit to building the next generation of construction workers. And we ask that you support this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
I thought his shirt said Luna Mexican Restaurant. I thought he was going to say that they were coming to the shopping center first second. I was like, "Way to go, Grant."
Intend, Grant?
Very similar.
My eyes were deceiving me that first second.
Our next speaker is Jimmy Elrod.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. First and foremost, I would like to commend you for the great service that you provide to the city of Eastville. Much like my colleagues have already specified, I'm a representative with the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters, representing 10,000 union carpenters here in the Inland Empire. Much like my brother from the Labor's mentioned, we have a lot of members living in this area, finding themselves on the road four or five hours a day, you know, to make a good, decent livable income to provide for them and their families. This is going to be a good project that's going to create good-paying jobs, not just on the construction side, but good ample amount of jobs after the construction is completed. With that being said, other than the continued contributing factor to the economy, that this is going to create good sales revenues for the city, stimulating the economy, it's just a good project all around. And the developer is proven to be a good developer, who is going to use good skilled tradespeople on the projects. And with that being said, I urge you to approve the proposed resolutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Aguilar, are there any further public comments on this item?
That concludes public comment.
Thank you. Like to invite the applicant, if you would like to speak on this.
Mr. Mayor, council members, good evening. My name is Ray Pulverini, representing the Merge project. As was said in the beginning, what you see before you tonight is not what this project started as. We paid close attention to the neighbors, to the planning staff, to the engineering staff, to the planning commission, and generated a plan that we moved uses, we eliminated uses, we did all sorts of, we did a significant number of changes to the plan, including vehicular and pedestrian circulation, all of that, to come together with a plan that, that we think meets the city's needs. I was planning on talking about all the benefits of the project, but they've been clearly elucidated, and want to take the time and just comment on the representation that we have from the unions here tonight. I was involved with the principles of Orbis in completing the campus. That's a project that we were working on for 18 months, and with using union labor, there were no injuries on that job. These are trained workers, trained professionals that, that go home safely. And it's a testament to them and to their work ethic, and we're glad to have their support for this project and to have them work on our, on our jobs. The benefits, I think, have been shown. I won't spend a lot of time going through them individually, and I'll keep this short. We and our design team have cooperated very closely with the planning staff, and we've got this project with features that are a benefit to the city. And we hope that you'll recognize all these benefits that have been, you know, have been listed by others. I'm available to answer any questions. We have representatives tonight from Sprouts, from Chevron. We have our lead project designer here with us. We have the technical studies consultants here with us, and our land use advisor, and we can answer any questions. I will close by saying that the collaboration between the city and the developer has resulted in a project that we believe warrants this council's approval of all the resolutions that are before you tonight. I thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening.
Thank you.
So I might just highlight something that you just said. He used the word Sprouts, and that's something that our community has been incredibly desiring to have, and they went to bat and represented Eastville with a national grocery store brand like Sprouts that our community has been desiring. And I just want to say, thank you very much for bringing them to Eastville. Our residents and businesses here truly appreciate that. So I appreciate the hard work that you guys did to make that come to a place, and we're excited to be a city that has a Sprouts. If my council approves it. No pressure.
Just for clarification on helping me out, if we have any questions for the applicant, should we leave the public hearing open or close it and then?
You should leave the public hearing open if you have any questions for the applicant.
Okay. Then at this time, council, do we have any questions for the, for staff or the applicant?
No. But I would like to make a motion.
Go ahead, Mr. Plot.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to, I want to compliment you guys for putting this together, and I think this has been a long, I mean, from what it was, even when Sprouts came on, it was still nine drive-throughs and, and, you know, and you've listened to city, or you listen to the staff, you've listened to the, our planning commission, you've listened to the residents, you've listened to council in multiple meetings. I think it's bigger, I think, than, than what we think, and I, we've been really struggling as a city to try, hey, we want good quality architecture, good planning, and it shows. It's, the landscaping is beautiful, it's awesome, the retail that's going in there's awesome, everything about it's great, and it's setting a precedence moving forward. It's been a long battle in our city to try to have that. And I think for future projects, I think it's a great example for other developers building in the city of what we're anticipating, expecting. So I thank you, and thank you to Grant as well, for working and listening, and your staff as well, for making that coming together. That's all I wanted to mention about that, and I truly appreciate it, so thank you.
We were paying them, but they dealt with us.
That's part of that, that's part of the, you know, the play, so thank you.
Any other comments? I have just a couple of quick questions and comments on this project, just kind of echo council member Plot. Appreciate all that you have done in this project in getting, getting us to this point. I wasn't real clear on the scooter parking that the planning commission conditioned this with. To be honest, I'm not sure I'm a fan of having that. I don't know that we want that in our city. I would probably recommend that we go without that. If that's, I just don't think it's.
Just so you know, Mayor, I already have two scooter companies wanting to come talk to me about bringing their scooter companies to our community, whether we approve it or not. So there's a lot of communities in Southern California that are bringing scooters as transportation, and in all the beach communities in Los Angeles and Orange County have them, and down in San Diego. And only one, I believe it's one city right now, is Santa Monica, that is, is, is starting to regulate them a little bit more. But there, it is a trend in transportation and mobility in many communities, and so the scooters won't come unless we design our community correctly, but it might not be a bad thing to just hold the spot in case the, they do come, because otherwise, then they'll just be in the walkways. And so just setting the land aside, or the spot aside for them, might not be a bad thing. The scooters won't come until we approve a company coming here or something like that, and we can work to regulate how they're used and what they're used, if we allow that to happen. But it is something that is, there is a scooter wave of transportation right now in Southern California, so, and there are electric scooters as well.
And I understand, and I see that, and I see these cities, these beach cities, these cities in Orange County that are doing this, but that's not Eastville. My fear is, and this is a totally different item, but my fear is, is we are not set up like those cities. If we have the Merge having these, and then we have the Gateway having these, there's a lot of residential homes in between there, and a lot of these scooters are going to get left in these residential areas. I'm not a fan of having the scooters. I don't think we're a city that's set up for those, and I don't want to condition a project as something that isn't appropriate for our city.
Duly noted.
So, that's just my, my recommendation. My other question was, is are there going to be any electric charging vehicle stations on this project at all?
Yes.
Yes?
There'll be approximately 10 electric charging stations with more piped, prepared for the future.
Yeah, there'll be capacity to add significantly more, that's in the California Green Code, but from day one, there'll be 10 places to plug your car in. Yes.
I think that's, that's great. That's awesome. I like to see that. We had a vendor that came through that had to, that did a demo for us, and he had to stop in multiple places, so it's not only for our residents, but it's also for people passing through. So I think it's a great thing. The last thing is just on the architecture, on the buildings that are facing the Sondaro project. I know that there are going to be trees along that side, but I don't know if there's anything architecturally that we can do on the buildings itself, because you look at those homes there, a majority of those homes, if you haven't been into those, those models, it's going to be the bedrooms, the master bedroom specifically, that's going to be overlooking this project. And I think part of our duty as a council is to protect and to be the voice of our residents, but also our future residents. Unfortunately, there's no homes built there except the model, so if there's something that we can do to make that a little bit better for them looking out their windows?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, that's already a condition that was recommended by the planning commission, that's in your package. So we've already started talking with the applicant about that. I think we can come to a good conclusion on that. I will note also, and I think on your dais tonight, we did get correspondence from Lennar, who's building those homes. They're in favor of the projects, and they're, we've been talking with them as we've gone through. One of the changes that was made in the project that's really not reflected up here, the fact, the reason there's a blank parcel down there came directly from conversations with them, so, but they're, they're fully aware, and we're ready to bring that architectural discussion to a conclusion with the applicant.
So if we approve this, that's on a condition that there's an architectural elevation that's going to be?
Yes, that they have to improve those to the satisfaction of the city before they can build them.
Okay. My last comment is just regarding the gas station. I think it's great that we flipped that. My only concern does get when it's the back of a building. We've seen on certain projects, some newer projects, that the back of the building has not been kept up as well as the front of their building. I just want to make sure that, that, that we don't see that happen, that they think that it's the back of the building, and they start storing things there.
Yeah, I, the reason I don't think you're going to see that happen on this one is that it's not, for instance, like the shops building on Sumner, where you have back doors into the individual tenant spaces. This building is going to load from the front and the side, so you're, on the back there, you don't see any doors. So they're, they're not going to have any reason to go back there with any materials or anything. There's a, nothing will be happening back there. So we're fairly comfortable with that. And as I mentioned, it will, you'll see an improved elevation on that building as well when it's constructed.
Thank you. Last but not least, I just wanted to say thank you for getting this project together. I mean, this, like, like council member Plot has said, this is a great project, it's come a long way. Thank you for working with our city staff and listening to the concerns into, to making this a project. I look forward to this project, and so I would like to entertain a motion if there's no further discussion. Councilmember Tesari?
Did you have a comment? Sorry, I had one question. Was there any consideration given to a hydrogen fuel cell recharging station?
No, we did, we did not look at that.
Okay, something that we might want to look into in the future, in my personal opinion.
I'm sure if that market develops, that Chevron will want to get into that, we'll undoubtedly see them here to change that.
The opportunities, it will develop. Thank you.
No further comments? Entertain a motion? Quick question?
Sorry, before you entertain a motion, could you close the public hearing? Thank you.
Maybe I got to read my script. If there's no further discussion, I would like to close the public hearing and entertain a motion if there's no further comment after council member Plot.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Erica, do, if we want to make a motion, but you use also a council member Tesari's suggestion of the CCTV camera, do we need to add that into the motion? This is my question, or can it be as a condition?
Yeah, if you want to make that a condition, you would add that to the conditions on the major development review, to provide those additional cameras. If you'd like to put a number on those, that'd be appropriate as well. So anything you want to do to lock that down, so we want it compatible with the city's cameras, so that we can, so our police department can use them. And if you want, I thought I heard a number, three or four cameras, if you want to put a number on that, that helps us.
Any suggestions?
Doesn't have a number, just. Wasn't there, I thought it was in this presentation that cameras were already included?
That's for the drugstore, I believe.
Yeah. Sprouts.
Yeah, but I think you're talking about more for the streets and the other public area?
I would like the city to be in control of them, that we could place them wherever we thought would be advantageous for public safety reasons throughout the site, whether it was on the corners and covering the intersections, as well as, I mean, because each of those boxes, each of the camera systems has four cameras, with the, and three of them have the 360, so we could cover that entire project, plus the surrounding streets with four cameras.
Well, perhaps without putting a number on that, if the, if the applicant will agree, if we just say that they'll install cameras to the satisfaction of the city?
We'll work with law enforcement and identify a video cameras, a system to help our law enforcement provide that, and we'll work with them on that.
I'm satisfied with that.
And if we could just, for the record, get the applicant's consent to the addition of that condition of approval?
Mr. Mayor, council members, my request would be that there was a cap put on the number as opposed to just a blanket. We'll put them wherever the city wants.
I have a question. Are you, Mr. Tesari, are you referring to, are you more concerned about the interior of the project or the exterior entrance exit points? Because there's, there's technically, if you look at this, there's four.
There'd be 12 cameras.
There's four entrance-exit points.
Four cameras. Well, if we use four of the same type of cameras we already have around the city, and we place them strategically around that particular project site, we could cover the entire thing. We can cover all the egress and ingress, as well as, you know, the, the buildings, so that, you know, we could identify vehicles coming in and out, people coming in and out if it's necessary for a law enforcement investigation. So I think four cameras would be adequate. I don't think we need to go above that.
So four camera systems?
Yes.
Because there's multiple.
Four camera systems. Well, it's one box. Yeah, so it'd be one apparatus, four total. No more than four. If you think you could do it with three, with the sheriff's department, three's fine.
So no more than four?
No more than four.
Okay, we'll work with that.
Four cameras or four stations?
Four stations.
So it could be a multiple of 16 cameras? Because they do operate, they're, they're still separate CCTV units, they're not.
There's one hard drive for all of them.
Correct. Okay.
Council members, that is acceptable to the, to the applicant.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Turn it on.
Sorry, my button. I'd like to make a motion to approve the project with the condition that we just discussed.
Second.
Do we need to do each individual item? So to start off, I would like to entertain, I'm sorry, Mr. Norris?
Yeah, let's be sure and do a CEQA piece first. We need to certify the final EIR, and then we can get into the project.
So I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt a resolution certifying an environmental impact report and adopting a mitigation measure monitoring program and statement of overriding considerations pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act.
Move approval.
Second. We have a first by Mr. Tesari and a second by Mr. Lorimer. Mr. Aguilar?
Councilmember Yow?
Aye.
Councilmember Lorimer?
Aye.
Councilmember Tesari?
Aye.
Mayor Proten Plot?
Yes.
Mayor Rigby?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
I'd like to entertain a motion adopting a resolution approving a general plan amendment to change the land use designation on approximately 10.8 acres, southern portion of the project area from light industrial to commercial retail. So moved.
Second.
Mr. Aguilar?
Councilmember Yow?
Aye.
Councilmember Lorimer?
Aye.
Councilmember Tesari?
Aye.
Mayor Proten Plot? Mayor Rigby?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
I'd like to entertain a motion to introduce an ordinance approving a change of zone for approximately fifteen point four acres from heavy agricultural to industrial park, to be consistent with existing general plan land use designation of light industrial, and to change approximately ten point eight acres from heavy agricultural to general commercial, to be consistent with the proposed general plan designation of commercial retail.
So I move.
Second.
Councilmember Yao?
Aye.
Councilmember Lorimer?
Aye.
Councilmember Tesari?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Plot?
Yes.
Mayor Rigby?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
I'd like to entertain a motion adopting a resolution approving a major development review, the development of the merged retail and industrial center consisting of six retail buildings totaling approximately fifty-nine thousand six hundred and eighty-five square feet, and the eight industrial buildings totaling approximately three hundred and thirty-six thousand five hundred and one square feet. Don't forget that one square foot, subject to conditions of approval.
I'll move approval.
Second. Mr. Agler?
Councilmember Yao?
Are we, is, are we including the four camera, the four camera stations?
That'll be the last.
The last one, okay, got it. Sorry about that.
We're doing the major development review now?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, that would be added as a condition to this approval, so if that's the intent.
Thank you. With the condition of approval to add the four, add the maximum of four camera station units.
So I move.
Second.
Councilmember Yao?
Aye.
Councilmember Lorimer?
Aye.
Councilmember Tesari?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Plot?
Yes.
Mayor Rigby?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you for catching that, Councilmember Yao. Yao, I would like to entertain a motion to adopt a resolution approving a tentative parcel map to subdivide the fifteen point four acres of land with the IP zone into eight parcels, and to subdivide the ten point eight acres of land with the C1 CP zone into nine parcels, subject to conditions of approval.
So I move.
Second. Mr. Agler?
Councilmember Yao?
Aye.
Councilmember Lorimer?
Aye.
Councilmember Tesari?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Plot?
Yes.
Mayor Rigby?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt a resolution approving a variance from the parking lot landscaping and shading requirements of the zoning code. So moved.
Second.
Mr. Agler?
Councilmember Yao?
Aye.
Councilmember Lorimer?
Aye.
Councilmember Tesari?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Plot?
Yes.
Mayor Rigby?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt a resolution approving a conditional use permit for the sales of alcohol in a proposed grocery store, subject to conditions of approval. So moved.
Second.
Mr. Agler?
Councilmember Yao?
Aye.
Councilmember Lorimer?
Aye.
Councilmember Tesari?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Plot?
Yes.
Mayor Rigby?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt a resolution approving a conditional use permit for the sales of beer and wine at a proposed gas station convenience store. So moved. Second. Mr. Agler?
Councilmember Yao?
Aye.
Councilmember Lorimer?
Aye.
Councilmember Tesari?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Plot?
Yes.
Mayor Rigby?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
I just want to thank the contractors union for showing up and supporting and helping us build a great community. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt a resolution approving a conditional use permit for the operation of a drive-through for a proposed drugstore, subject to conditions of approval.
So I move.
Second. Mr. Agler, please.
Councilmember Yao?
Aye.
Councilmember Lorimer?
Aye.
Councilmember Tesari?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Plot?
Yes.
Mayor Rigby?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt a resolution approving a conditional use permit for the operation of a future drive-through coffee shop, subject to conditions of approval.
So I move.
Second. Mr. Agler?
Councilmember Yao?
Aye.
Councilmember Lorimer?
Aye.
Councilmember Tesari?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Plot?
Yes.
Mayor Rigby?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. That concludes item eight point one. So thank you, and we look forward to your project. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot.
So when is it going to be done?
You buy your first vegetable in
He said we could buy our first vegetable in the first quarter of March twenty twenty. Thank you, Mr. Ross.
I, I was pretending to be a council member there for a second, so when's it going to be done?
All right. Well, thank you. Moving on to item number nine, city council business. Um, item number nine point one, community satisfaction study professional services agreement. Ms., Ms. Applegate, please.
Yes, good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council, and members of the community. This evening proposed before you is a professional services agreement with True North Research and the City of Eastville for the community satisfaction study project. In November, a request for proposals process for the community satisfaction study was performed. We received five proposals from consultant firms, and staff is recommending approval to select True North Research to perform this project in its entirety. The study is planned to launch early January, with the results to the study being presented to City Council in February. This project is part of our strategic plan in priority level three, target one and goal one. For the benefit of the public, the City of Eastville strives to be strategic in communication, community engagement, and community outreach efforts, so that we can better cultivate authentic relationships with our residents, leading us to a better understanding of the priorities and needs of our community. The goal of this project is to gather resident feedback to measure satisfaction, perspectives, preferences with city services, quality of life, and other relevant information, including strengths and areas of improvement. This will help us identify opportunities to help us better understand the community's interests, concerns, wants, and needs. As you all know, this is a much anticipated project and something that we all have been working towards, and I'm excited to bring this before you this evening. I'd like to share that True North's president, Dr. Timothy McLarnie, and principal researcher, Richard Sarles, have personally designed and conducted more surveys to assist California municipalities in meeting their performance and planning goals than any other researchers in the state of California. And since True North's founding in two thousand two, their team has conducted over one thousand surveys for public agencies, including more than three hundred and fifty community opinion surveys for California cities, and this includes um, for planning, budgeting, and performance measurement purposes. Staff is recommending that the City Council approve the professional services agreement with True North Research for forty-four thousand two hundred and thirty-eight dollars with a fifteen percent contingency of six thousand six hundred and thirty-five dollars and seventy cents, for a tot- for a total of fifty thousand dollars eight hundred, fifty thousand eight hundred and seventy-three dollars and seventy cents, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. I'd like to note that as part of the fiscal year twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen budget, funds were allocated in the City Council General Fund budget for this project under other contractual services for an amount of seventy-five thousand dollars. With the proposed amount, we will be saving a total of twenty-four thousand one hundred and twenty-six dollars and thirty cents. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
When can it be done?
Well, the, um, pro- the study will be launched, um, early next month in January, and presented to council in February at the second meeting.
The goal of this is so that we can utilize this to build on our strategic planning workshop to make sure that where we're going with those goals and priorities are in alignment uh, with our, and we might find something out new from our community. This is a scientific study, um, and so it, it's not a social media blitz. It, it is something that we will reach out across cultures, uh, uh, communities, neighborhoods in our community, and really get a diversified, uh, um, and feedback for even those that don't engage in social media, uh, which is a, a very small percentage of our population, but it seems like a very loud popu- part of our population sometimes, and so it, it will give everybody an opportunity and we'll get a sign, it's really an accurate measure of, um, some feedback, and so, um, uh, as many of you know, this is something that, um, Mayor Clint Lorimer, uh, or former Mayor Clint Lorimer, I should say, um, I'll have to practice this. Uh, um, uh, uh, asked for, um, uh, uh, last year, and we were successful, and, and you put it in the budget, uh, this last year, so um, we are going to be utilizing this to help us set up the fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budget, um, which we are already starting on, so, um, um, which is, it's, it's a never-ending, uh, cycle, so. Uh, um, we are excited to help this, uh, allow, allow us to make sure where we're putting our money i- is, is being effective. Uh, we want to make sure we are an effective government, um, and getting the feedback loop is an important component of that. So, um, I appreciate Olivia's hard work o- o- on this and getting this RFP done quickly. Um, and then we're, we're already, um, having meetings to set up, uh, getting the questionnaire and all the questions ready to go first part of January twenty nineteen, so that we can get this back to you in February, so that it can be part of our budgetary decision-making.
Thank you. Um, one second, let's go to public, uh, if there's any public comment, and then we'll go to council discussion. Mr. Agler, are there any public comments on this item?
We've had no requests.
No requests? That makes it easy. Ms. Yao?
How are the questionnaires or survey going to be distributed?
So, uh, they randomly select people in the community, um, through a, a scientific process, a- and, and then they reach out to them, uh, either through email, phone calls, or, or letters in the mail, and you have a, um, a, a specific PIN number, um, so, a- and a, a link to go on, and, and then there are phone surveys as well as, as, um, um, computer surveys, and so there's a combination of the two, and so, uh, i- it's not sent out through social media. Uh, um, it is done through, and, and the surveys will be done in both Mandarin and, and Spanish as well, and so uh, we want to repres- uh, have ma- as many different people have access to the survey.
That was going to be my next question.
I, I, I'm reading your mind already, I'm learning you.
Yes, and that was important to us, so that was a part of our, um, RFP. And the sample size, just for, um, reference, is one thousand.
A- a- and, and, which is really interesting, um, are, the, the researcher said, well, for a city your size, you really only need to do three hundred or four hundred, uh, uh, residents to get a, a scientific, uh, your, uh, and, and I said, well, I, I'd like to do, and Olivia and I both said, we'd like to have it go the, for the little extra money, we'd like to do and have a thousand people, so that we can say a thousand people were contributing to the scientific. It doesn't add much to the scientific relevancy of, of the results, uh, but it does allow people to have more opportunities to participate.
And share their voice.
Yeah, but it, 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 standard deviation, yes, it's like point, point zero 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 one difference, but.
But I think it's important to note, too, that it was a little bit more money, but still, still well under our budget.
Well under our budget.
Yes.
Any other comments from council? Mr. Lorimer?
Um, yeah, well, I, I, I must say, I'm very excited about this. I think it's going to be wonderful to be able to, uh, be strategic about how we utilize our resources, and, um, I, I appreciate the, the comments earlier, uh, Brian, but, um, it truly, a, a team effort. I think we have buy-in across the board, and of course, uh, staff making this a reality. It's, I'm excited.
Thank you. Any other comments? I just have one, one quick comment on this. I think it's great that we're doing this. I'm, I'm very, um, excited for this, and I really appreciate staff in putting this together and, and handling this. Um, I think this is a good opportunity to show that we are really trying to see what our community wants, what our residents want. We have been actively engaged with our community, and I think our communications department has done an excellent job with being actively engaged with our community, and this just goes to show that even further, that we are not passively getting, um, input from our residents, but we are, I, I don't want to say aggressively, because that's the wrong word to use, but we are somewhat going to be aggressive with this survey, that we're going to actually go out and reach people, so. Um, I think it's a great job, and I look forward to this.
Thank you.
We, we have the best communication team in all of California.
I would agree with that. Doing a great job.
It's a scientific study.
I would like to, uh, solicit a motion on this item nine point one. So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Agler.
Councilmember Yao?
Aye.
Councilmember Lorimer?
Aye.
Councilmember Tesari?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Plot?
Yes.
Mayor Rigby?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Moving on to item nine point two, automatic license plate recognition project contract award. Mr. Jones?
Yes, um, do we have a clicker? Oh, it's up there, hold on. So I want to acknowledge, um, both, uh, Craig Bradshaw, one, one of our contract inter- engineers from Interwest, as well as Tim Martin from, uh, the Eastville Police Department, uh, have been actively involved in this, a- a- as well as the council approved this last May. Uh, um, we will be taking this, uh, to the Public Safety Commission, uh, next Tuesday, because we missed, uh, we canceled the meeting last November, because we didn't have, we forgot we had this as an item to take for them, and that was my fault to not taking it before we came here. Um, but, um, we will share with them and, and get, seek their input on where we're lo- locating the cameras and, and, um, but, um, with this approved by City Council, May twenty-third, uh, twenty eighteen, funding included in the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen capital improvement budget, we put in eight, eight hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars, and just like, um, uh, the last budget where we budgeted more, um, uh, this one came in less, um, so we're very excited, so i- if you would like to utilize all this money, you, we can add more cameras up to eight sixty-six, i- i- if that is your desire, but we did get a budget far less than eight sixty-six, so that is your prerogative to tell me, hey, we'd like more cameras or less cameras. Um, um, but a- at this point, we have thirty cameras, um, and YALP, oh, the other thing I wanted to share is, last week I went to, uh, was it last week or the week before, I went to, uh, the city of Norco, because one of the locations is going to be on a City of Norco traffic signal, which is Hamner and Sliceman, uh, right outside of Silver Lakes, so that we can capture traffic coming in and out of, uh, the city, and it's a very strategic location for us, that we can have one intersection covering Citrus and, uh, or it's, it's, Citrus and Sliceman right outside of Silver Lake.
Citrus and Hamner?
There we go. Citrus and Hamner, right outside of Silver Lakes. Thank you for the correction. Uh, um, a- and, um, it, it's a very strategic location for us. It's not in our city, but we are very close to that border, a- and it, it allows us to cover the exit from Citrus as well as, um, the, the Hamner location. And, and just so you know, if this camera system was already installed, it may have helped, uh, um, in, in solving a, a, a very tragic crime that happened, so, in that area, and so, um, we are very much looking forward to having this technology help us solve crimes and, and, uh, lead to arrests and convictions. Um, so, a- and that is why we're bringing ALPR here, is to enhance law enforcement efficiency and effectiveness through technology, um, enhance public safety, deter criminal activity. Please don't have crime in our community, because we're going to catch you. Uh, um, and we're going to record your license plate as you're coming and going out of our community, so, uh, um, alert law enforcement of vehicles, people of rest. So if you committed a crime in another city, don't come in our city either. Uh, um, so don't come back to our city with stolen goods, uh, um, because we'll catch you. If you're a felon, don't come in, uh, um, into our city. Uh, um, and so provide investigative leads after a crime has been committed. Um, so how will ALPR be used? It'll be used in criminal investigations, locating stolen vehicles, identifying vehicles used in major crimes, identifying vehicles owned by people of interest, uh, in crimes or, or, or by law enforcement, shall only be used by official law enforcement, uh, business, so no one from the city of Eastville will have access to this. Only, uh, our Eastville Police Department, uh, will have access to this information, um, and shall only be used by, um, the official law enforcement business, and Riverside County ALPR technology usage and pri- privacy policy. So the Riverside Sheriff's Office already has a, a, a usage and a privacy policy, which was attached tonight in the staff report, I believe. Um, so here's just an example of one city that has ALPR and, and the patrol statistics from a local agency. Um, it, it, it helped with four hundred and forty, uh, stolen vehicles, um, um, that were scanned. A hundred and sixty-eight were recovered, so that's a- almost, um, thirty percent or, uh, or forty percent of this, uh, vehicles were, were recovered. Um, let's see, um, carjack vehicles recovered were four, embezzled vehicles recovered, uh, twenty-one, total felony vehicles recovered six. Um, so total suspects arrested, a hundred and twenty-four, so getting a hundred and twenty-four criminals off the streets through the system is a, a pretty, uh, great solution and efficiency, um, and that's just in a one-year period for that agency. Uh, a great solution and efficiency, um, and that's just in a one-year period for that agency.
What, what's an embezzled vehicle?
Say, say it again? What's that? Oh, it's a one year, that was a one-year period.
What's an embezzled vehicle?
Um, I can ask the law enforcement what an embezzled vehicle is.
That's a appropriating, uh, vehicle, um, against the owner's, uh, consent. Or if you, uh, lease or rent a vehicle and you fail to return it, it would be considered more embezzled than a stolen vehicle.
Thank you.
If you're, if, if you're not returning your library books on time, it's an embezzled book. Automatic license plate reading cameras, uh, Vigilant Solution was selected as a sole source priv- provider by the Riverside County Sheriff's Department. That, these will be mounted on, uh, patrol vehicle cameras and they might even be mounted on our code enforcement vehicle, vehicles. Because as they're going through our residential neighborhoods or our shopping centers, um, um, that might be one area. Um, but the information will not be to our code enforcement, it'll, it will only be provided the technology, uh, to the Riverside Sheriff's Office. Um, and then the traffic signal cameras on fixed traffic signals, and I'll show you that in a little time, and it's real-time notification. Re- literally this technology works in milliseconds, it re- it recognizes the license plate, reads it, scans it against millions of databases out there. A- a- and, um, if it, it registers on something, it pings all the officers in the area. A- and alerts them to that there's a vehicle of known interest in the community. It, it also allows us, um, to say, what, what, if, did this vehicle go through this intersection? Or it could say, wow, um, it could be used to, to say. Has this vehicle been stalking this area or 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 surveilling, uh, sur- providing surveillance on this inter- in- intersection for a while? And saying while there's a pattern that this vehicle doesn't belong in this neighborhood and showing a pattern that it was a, uh, um, uh, an in- uh, ill intent. Uh, uh, or a premeditated intent. Um, so this is what the cameras look like on the back of the pole, you'll nev- you'll, you'll rarely see them at fifty miles an hour going underneath them. Uh, um, but they're a little, they're on the far side of the signal, so as you're going through them. You, you'd have a hard time seeing them, but they're looking at your license plate as you're going away, because most people have license plates on their rear of their car. Some don't have them on the front of their car, uh, um, we won't mention anybody in particular, uh, um, but, um, uh, uh, um. Uh, um, but these are what they look like a little up closer, um, and these are the ones that are in Chino, uh, um. And these are the locations that we would be putting them and you can see the one down at Citrus and Hammer, Hamner. And we would be putting them coming in and out of the, the, the community down at that location. Um, this will also help in the city of Norco, which is also contract patrol by RSO. Um, uh, to make sure that everybody coming in and out of Silver Lakes is, eh, eh, where a lot of kids are. And, and one of our greatest tourist attractions in southeastville is well protected, uh, um, and, um, so, um. It's also where our community park is for picnic in the, eh, picnic in the park and we have a lot of people come through that area, yes.
Thank you, Brian, where's, where's number seven at? Is it, or, cuz we're installing total seven locations, correct?
The, 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 these, these are the number of cameras at the locations, so the numbers re- re- respond to the cameras, not, eh, eh, it's not one, two, three, four, five, six.
How many, how many locations?
There, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven locations.
Got it. I know there's about thirty cameras total.
Right, thirty, thirty cameras right now.
Okay.
A- and so, um, the contract came in, uh, well below, a- about a hundred thousand dollars, uh, below. And this is for a five-year contract with Vigilant to provide these services. A- and, um, so I'm asking you to authorize me to execute the agreement and I wanna thank, um, um, Craig Bradshaw. For working on this project along, um, with Tim Martin from the, uh, Eastville Police Department.
I, I, I should mention that Greg Mills with Vigilant Solutions, he, is he also here to answer questions?
Mister Aguilar, have we received any public comments on this item?
We've had no requests.
Is there any discussion amongst the council?
I, I, I might just add that this is also one of the strategic planning goals, the, uh, priorities and, and if, let me look at it real quick. It's enhanced, it's, it's one of our level three priority goals and enhance public safety through technology, target number two, goal number two. So, we are, uh, checking the boxes and getting things done on our strategic plan that you already adopted in November fourteenth. So, we are getting things done quickly, that's effective government for you.
And we're doing more than just checking the boxes. We're getting stuff done.
That's right.
Is there any discussion among council?
Uh, yeah. Mister Plot? I may have a, a question for the applicant, but we're not actually about the applicant, but for the vendor, um. Couple, yeah, a couple of questions, trying to think where I, where to start here. What, uh, as far as additional ongoing costs, we know what the upfront costs are, uh, what are some of the di- additional full service costs? I- if it is covered in, in the installation, what are the additional, I, I know we're going to the modem route, not network.
So, so this is one hundred percent coverage for five years, warranty and everything for five years. A- and then at five years, we, we, we can, we can re- or at the four-year mark, we should probably start negotiating a contract for any services beyond there. Uh, or replacing the cameras or updating the cameras or or whatnot, but, um, um.
Even the modem cost too, too, I know there's gotta be.
The, the modem cost is not included, there's about. There's about thirty-five thousand dollars in modem costs over that period, uh, we are, uh, looking at ways of getting internet to those intersections to cover that.
Yeah, I know the internet would, would, the, the internet costs, I mean, it's probably a lot greater, but I know it'd be a much better solution.
Right, it's, correct.
Okay. A- a- and, and we have a, a grant right now to bring a lot of software in, at our, both wireless technology as well as fiber technology. And we're also working with the small cell sites, a- a- as well as a number of vendors that are, are, are starting to pull fiber in our community. A- and, and so we are working on ways to get our community to be, have smart technology in our infrastructure.
I have, uh, another question as well.
Maybe we can talk to the owner of the streetlights to get those taken care of?
Yes. I might know them.
Yeah. I have a question, this, this more for, for either Captain Head or Lieutenant Martin. W- what are we doing now, I mean, a- and thank you, one, for, uh, you know, it was, it's took a while to kinda get us to. Come on board with using the, the, the solution, what have we done in preparing our deputies to, to utilize this, this is something new? Uh, at least for some of the deputies and, and again, the, the soft, the, the, the magic in this product, there's not necessarily so much the cameras, but it's the software, right? But more importantly, is how are deputies trained in this, right, to be as effective as possible? It's really to give them, you know, the tools they need to, you know, to, uh, respond, so if you can kinda break that down and it'd be helpful.
Yeah, sure, our, uh, sorry, good evening, Mister Mayor, councilmembers. Our, uh, Ben Clark Training Center, who develops all our training for all our deputies, has a four-part series for every single deputy. To take for the ALPRs for the new system and once they complete all four segments. That's only when they'll get a login for the ALPR system. And those segments talk about our policy and when and when you cannot use the ALPR system and things like that. So, but it's a four segments, once they complete all the training, then they'll get a login and then they'll be able to access the ALPR system.
And on the circumstance to where, you know, sometimes deputies come and go and it, it happens, uh. You know, what happens if one comes, you know, they're, they're, they're from another, uh, contract city, they come in, I mean, how, how is that, what does that process look like? And they're not trained because they're, you know, maybe in the, in the city of, you know, uh, at other contracts, they just don't run ALPR cameras. So when they come here, what does that timeframe look like to get them trained?
Uh, it's, it's pretty quick, each segment, I believe, is like ten or fifteen minute segments. So you're talking about those four-part segments, will probably take about an hour of training and once they complete that hour of training, then they'll get the login. So, it's not, it's, it's a quick turnaround.
Thank you. Mister, sorry, thank you, Mister Mayor. Uh, Lieutenant Martin, uh, what you're speaking to, if I'm not mistaken, is the, the deputies that would be utilizing the vehicle with the apparatus on it.
Yeah, not only the vehicle, but we're gonna have vehicles also in our city, uh, patrol vehicles, that can have access to the fixed cameras. So what, what happens is when they log into the computer, we have basically a drop-down menu, they'll click on the ALPR, they'll minimize it. And then when a car, a vehicle of note comes through our city, that, that'll maximize, the LPR screen maximizes. And say, this vehicle, ten eight fifty-one stolen vehicle, just cross Citrus and Hamner. And then it's a white Toyota Corolla license plate, whatever. And then each, every single deputy in our city will have access to that, including Norco and Harupa deputies. So that, it'll pop up on their screen too.
And I was gonna say, I'm, I'm, I'm obviously not trained on that system, so, but, uh, that would also be voiced via radio to every other unit who is not logged.
Our dispatch will also have the same system where they'll minimize the, the, uh, ALPR screen. And when that same vehicle that our deputy gets will come to our dispatch, they'll voice it over to all the units.
Yeah, so they would tell everybody and, eh, that's outworking patrol, hey, that's, that's what happened, a vehicle just went through that, you know, southbound at Citrus or something.
We're gonna have, we're gonna, this project, the, the price includes six units with the four cameras on each unit. So we'll have six units, w- we've probably have three on one shift and then throughout the day we'll have three others and they'll drive around the area, so.
As, even if they are not, they're still gonna hear the voice, so they can, it's still effective.
Yeah, they just don't want, they won't have the mobile cameras, but they'll have, they'll have access with all the fix.
So the, so the mobile cam- cameras are moving around the community, so if we were driving up and down the shopping center and there was a stolen car parked in the shopping center. And they drive it by and it would bing, they could just back up in that drive aisle and see there's the car right there, parked right there and, and. That, these are used in airports, uh, big shopping centers throughout California. Uh, one of my, uh, good friends who's a police chief in the city of Carlsbad, they have this and they're catching criminals coming in from their. Cuz they don't have any criminals in their city either, just like we don't, uh, um, but the, the other people come and visit their city. A- and when they come and visit their city, they, uh, are making some pretty significant arrests.
M- Mister Mayor, uh, member of city council, I'd like to add that our goal is to train every member at the Hooper Valley Station. In regards to, uh, being able to operate the system and, uh, to fully understand the system. I- i- in the, uh, the time that we have a deputy, uh, from another area within our, our Hooper Valley jurisdiction. That might cover for somebody who's sick or rotate throughout the community, so everybody at the Hooper Station will be familiar with and be able to operate it.
Also, one other thing I, I wanted to bring up is it, this also, I mean, utilizing this system should give us a better opportunity to pull over people that have paper plates, right? Um, I mean, any, any talk in regards to that as well?
Yeah, the ALPR system, I, I think Mister Mills could probably, uh, talk more about this, but it actually recognizes paper license plates, that's correct.
So, um, paper plates are gonna be a, a little bit more hit or miss. The cameras themselves work off of infrared technology, so we're looking for, uh, reflective qualities, um, that come out when you flash infrared onto a license plate. It comes out nice and clear with that camera, um, so paper plates, they are hit or miss, um, it's, you know.
Any other comments from council? Do we know is, uh, the city of Norco or the city of Harupa looking into this at all for their cities?
The city of Norco was jealous that I had a council that approved this and, and their council was trying to encourage their city manager to figure out some funding for this. So, um, they were excited that we were gonna be helping them on the north end of their town, uh, um, i- in exchange for putting it on their traffic signal. Um, a- and, uh, I got ten thumbs up from their council, except for their city attorney wanted it to come back as a, a genized item. Uh, instead of just doing an encroachment permit in their community like we would have done for them, but so, um, we're blessed to have. Erica is our city attorney, that she streamlines things for us, uh, uh, um, but, uh, um. Uh, we, they're going back next week to get that approval and, and, and the council was very in support of it, so. Um, but, um, whether they're gonna, I'm, they might wait and watch to see how effective we are with it. And, and then try to figure out how to do it in their community, but it'd be a, a great benefit if they considered it as well.
I would like to see if, uh, when our four-year mark comes, that we have to relook at this, if we can look to collaborate with our adjacent cities. Um, uh, Norco, Harupa, Ontario, I know Chino's already doing this, um, but I think if we collaborate with the adjacent cities. It just makes, uh, it improves all of our cities and could possibly lower our, um, our own expense if we work with these other cities.
Yeah.
So, I think it's a great idea, I look forward to this. If there's no further, uh, discussion with council, I'd like to solicit a motion regarding this item.
Second.
Mister Aguilar?
Councilmember Yao?
Aye.
Councilmember Lorimer?
Aye.
Councilmember Chisari?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Plot?
Yes.
Mayor Rigby?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Uh, a- and really, you guys are leading the edge i- 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 in, in western Riverside County, um, with this technology. To, to provide enhanced public safety to the residents and businesses of Eastville, so, uh, um, this is a great public safety, uh, tool and technology. To, uh, allow our officers to be more efficient and effective in solving crimes and, and, and deterring crimes in our community. So, I appreciate, um, the, the support for this.
Mister Plot? I'd like to make one suggestion to staff if we can and, and maybe, maybe whether we do it at the beginning of the year. But there's this been huge public safety improvements that I think needs to be recognized now, now that this is approved, but. I think it needs to be worked with that, you know, eventually we'll have our additional ten hours in our commercial officer, right? So we're, we're utilizing not only the, the man and woman power of, of, of the deputies, but technology now. The Neighborhood Watch Program collaborating with our residents, um, and I'm missing one more in this whole, uh, the streetlights, right, lighting.
Yeah.
Right, uh, those are not small at all, I mean, those are four huge things that are being accomplished and I think if we can put out some type of, um.
We'll definitely highlight the public safety investments that we're making in our community, uh, our crime is at an all-time low in Eastville. Uh, per capita a- a- and, and our arrests are an all-time high, so, um, with the help of the Neighborhood Watch Program. With, with the, this, the, the, the stuff that's going on, we're doing some amazing things and, and I might be over-exaggerating that just a little bit. Uh, um, but, uh, year over year, pre- last year over this year, we saw some significant decreases in the first nine months. Of twenty seventeen versus twenty eighteen and, uh, there's a lot of great, the male thefts are. About a ninety percent decrease and so, uh, um, it, it is, uh, a- and I don't have it right in front of me, so I could be exaggerating just a little bit. But it's, it's pretty, the numbers are pretty impressive right now.
Thank you.
Yeah, if we can do that, it'd be great. Thank you, Mister Mayor.
Thank you, I, I agree, I think that's great, um, i- if we can possibly hold off on that announcement though. Just until it goes before the Public Safety Commission, um, just to make sure it goes through them and make sure there's no major things. I, I know we approved that, approved it, but I just wanna make sure and give them the opportunity to at least hear it before.
You just approved the contract for thirty cameras, we're gonna verify the locations with the Public Safety Commission and then we will go it, we will go implement it.
Perfect.
The, uh, this will be impl- this, this implementation will start in early January and it'll be done within a couple of months, to my knowledge.
Thank you. Item nine point three, organizational benefit changes, Mrs Apeta?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, staff and members of the public. The item I have before you proposes am- amendments to the city employees benefits package. Which is in alignment with level one A strategic plan goal, strengthening organizational development and effectiveness. Staff believes these changes will provide city employees with significantly better cost-effective benefits, benefit options. The items before you, uh, there's three items and benefits that we have before you. The first area of change proposed is to increase life insurance benefit provided by the city. Uh, an annual cost increase of approximately one thousand for the city would provide the staff with enhanced benefit levels. As well as twenty-five thousand benefits for members of the city council. The second proposed change allows part-time employees that are not currently eligible for KLPers. Access to retirement programs at no additional cost and this is known as the Apple Program. So this would, this program works alternatively to social security, which we are currently in. It would save the city and part-time staff approximately two point four or five off their monthly retirement benefit cost. And the last area we propose changes in disability insurance. Staff proposes that moving away from state SDI program and towards private alternative. Which provides higher payouts and faster turnaround times in, um. Great needs of, in the greatest times where city employees need it the most. This change would cost the city approximately nine thousand dollars. Which will fund higher limits for short-term disability insurance and provide one percent net savings to all employees. The city will explore options that city employees could utilize FMLA-like solution. And I have Lori LaFranco here from Keenan Associates, who is the consultant, who can also answer questions.
A- again, th- this is a- a- another agenda item that is right, directly attached to the November fourteenth. Uh, strategic planning and priority goals of making sure that we are competitive and effective at, at addressing the, the, and valuing our staff. And providing the, uh, competitive benefits, uh. and providing the, uh, competitive benefits, uh, for a small increase in costs. We are dramatically increasing in the, the, the benefits that we are providing our employees by shopping around for competitive pricing and, and looking for private solutions versus public solutions that are more responsive, um, to, to helping address uh, our, our employees' needs in, in the, the greatest, uh, times, especially if there were a disability to occur.
Thank you. Mr. Aguilar, are there any public comments regarding this item?
We've had no requests.
Is there any discussion amongst council regarding this item? No discussion. I would like to, uh, solicit a motion.
So I move to approve.
Second.
Mr. Aguilar.
Councilmember Yao.
Aye.
Councilmember Loramore.
Aye.
Councilmember Chisari.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Plot.
Yes.
Mayor Rigby.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
On behalf of the entire team, I wanna say thank you very much for taking care of the team and, and providing competitive benefits uh, uh, and some of the best benefits. So, um, this is, this is a great, great step in the right direction.
Moving on to item nine point four mid-year organizational changes. Again, Miss Appetta.
She's been busy.
Good evening again, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members and members of the public. We have before you item nine point four, proposed changes to city hall staffing, which is also in alignment with strategic plan one A, strengthening organizational development and effectiveness. So what we've been doing is trying to identify some immediate needs. And although this same may seem like a lot of changes, um, it's much needed to continue to work and continue to get these, uh, strategic plans complete for the community. So what we have before you is title changes for the code enforcement team. We wanted to present that change to be Community Enhancement and Safety Team. The team, I, I wanna note that the team would still be able to enforce the city's municipal code. And code enforcement is a tool which, uh, when in compliance and desired results are not achieved. Secondly, new positions to reflect staffing needs. We wanted to bring on board a community development director. This would create added value to development needed here in the community. And the proposed position would be best used for remaining land in the city as well as ensuring that planning, public works and other departments are moving towards a unified mission. As reflected in the city's commitment to safety and community within line with level one strategic goal, enhance community quality in life, increasing staffing in code enforcement department by adding a community enhancement safety manager, another officer and a technician. This would also help bring the Neighborhood Watch Program on board. And adding these positions would also allow to have two officers a day and possibly staggering shifts to provide more assistance in the community. We are also proposing an emergency management specialist to enhance the city's preparedness efforts. One other request is six intern positions to be opened per departmental need. And this would help with, uh, large projects or fill interim staffing needs. So that doesn't, that does not necessarily mean that we would have six interns at one time. It would just be as needed. Status changes for the existing positions are to move two code enforcement positions and an accounting technician, a communications specialist from three quarters to a full-time and reclassify communications intern to full-time, which would complete two additional staffs to the amazing communications team that we have. All the proposed changes would be reflected in the mid-year budget, which is coming up, uh, at the second meeting in January. And the net increase to the budget is calculated at the top step and includes savings accumulated in the fiscal year by ke- keeping several positions vacant. Uh, Ernie is going to continue this presentation with the PowerPoint Budget Impact.
Yes, thank you, Angelica. Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Um, I first wanna refer to you on your, on the dice, you should have a copy of the comprehensive annual financial report. So some of the numbers I'll refer to, go back to that. So if any point.
Can we hit pause just a second? Cause that went on the consent item, uh, and, and, and it didn't get highlighted. And that, and that was my fault on the consent. I should have pulled it off and highlighted it. Uh, this is record-setting time for the city of Eastville turning in our CAFR and it is the best CAFR we've ever submitted. Um, and I wanna thank our finance team for this. We are well ahead of the deadline of required to, to submit our CAFR and the, and the numbers are amazing in it. So, um, we are in a very healthy financial state in this city. And, and, and a lot of it has been due to the hard work of, of staff and council together here. So, um, I, I wanna thank, uh, Ernie for his leadership in, uh, delivering this CAFR well ahead of schedule. So.
Thank you, Brian. Yes, so, um, the CAFR itself, uh, was designed by my staff. So I'm really impressed and pleased with the pictures and photos. Uh, and as you go through it, if you have any questions, please do not hesitate to let me know. I'd be more than happy to sit down with you and review the numbers contained here within the, uh, the CAFR itself. So, pretty exciting stuff. If you can't sleep at night, please feel free to open up. It should put you right to sleep. So. So what I wanna review with you today is a kind of a condensed version of the, uh, mid-year budget. We're gonna refer to the mid-year budget or actually have that on the agenda on January twenty-third. So this is kind of a condensed version of what you'll see there. But what this presentation part is gonna do is show you where we stand financially. Uh, we'll first talk about cash investments. In other words, how much money do we have in the bank? Uh, whether it be, uh, operating accounts, which are very liquid or those that are, um, long-term investments. We're gonna talk about that. Um, I'll show you some revenue numbers of where we've been and where we're going and where we're currently at now and the trends on those, as well as expenditures, because anything that is excess revenues gives, goes back into the bank and that's what we have left over. So that's kinda what I wanna highlight with some graphs and charts. But first I wanna start with the cash and investments because this is, this is important. Again, the money that's in our bank account that we have, uh, available to us. Um, and first and foremost, in your CAFR, uh, for the recently audited CAFR, when we looked at the agency as a whole, all the total cash investments, there was sixty-two point three million dollars, uh, that we had a- available to us. Of course, so that, some of that matters restricted, not available use, because it's either grants, gas tax monies, et cetera, that can't be touched. Uh, but when we look at the general fund cash, um, that, that's about sixty-two percent of the total cash and investment. So we have about thirty-eight million dollars there. Um, and we look at cash and investments, how they've increased from prior year, um, by thirty percent. And since about five years ago, we've increased our cash balances by a hundred and fifteen percent. And so what I wanna illustrate there, I know it's kinda hard to, to see, so I apologize, but this is the five-year trend on that. And you can see when we started way back in, in thirteen fourteen, our cash imbalance was about twenty-nine million. Uh, right now, as of June thirty, our cash balance was about sixty-two million. And again, this is because our, our revenues have exceeded our expenditures. And so that money gets put away in the bank and some of it again is available for use, some of it is restricted, but it just gives you an idea of where we stand as of right now with the total amounts. And now shifting gears to revenues, um, again, um, what we're looking at here is, is how revenues have, have gone over the past five years. So for the fiscal year eighteen nineteen, we're looking at just general fund revenues. Uh, we, we had projected those to be about twenty-two million dollars, um, which over the five-year period, we've increased revenues, uh, about seventy-six percent. But when we budgeted again, was very conservative. We don't include everything for the reasons of not trying to over-budget. So that seventy-six percent could be more like ninety to a hundred percent, um, over the past five years. Just depends on where this current year comes in on. And once we do have the mid-year budget projections, you'll actually see those numbers go way up. Um, we didn't include Costco in there. So I'll be curious to, eager to bring that to you to see where we stand with the sales tax, uh, revenues. So that'll be exciting to see that. Um, and again, revenues are always budgeted conservatively. And so here's another graph that's hard to see.
Or El Pololoco's, which drive-through is all backed up right now and, and as well as Miguel Junior. So.
Right, exactly. So again, just a five-year trend of where revenue has gone for the past five years. So starting back in the fiscal year of fourteen fifteen, we saw general fund revenues of about twelve point three million. Um, as of, uh, June thirty, we, we're looking at about twenty-two million dollars in revenue. So those are increasing, um, and we're looking to add more to that. So that, that's a very good trend to be on towards. Um, shifting over to expenditures, again, just focusing on general fund expenditures, uh, those are matter projected to be about twenty-three million dollars. Um, and again, these are up about ninety percent. And on the flip side, we always budget those higher than we think they should so they can come in under, um, and ensure that we don't overspend. And that's a, that's a practical way to budget and we wanna make sure we continue to do that. So.
And, and I think we saw an example of that twice tonight. Uh, the contract for the community satisfaction study was budgeted at seventy-five thousand and it came in at forty-five thousand. Uh, the ALPR was budgeted at eight hundred and sixty-six thousand and came in at seven hundred and fifty. So, you know, between the two of those, it was a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar savings that we overestimated our expenditures and, and are delivering projects a lot more cost-effectively.
Correct. And not to mention, when we do budget for personnel, we do put them at the top step. That gives us more flexibility to be able to, to, uh, use the budget wisely. Um, again, another, another graph kinda showing your expenditures and we did see a little bit of an increase between seventeen eighteen and eighteen nineteen, about five million dollars or so. Um, we are seeing a little bit more expenditures coming through. Part of that was personnel. Uh, we did increase by about a million dollars on the personnel for the eighteen nineteen budget. We did see some capital, uh, uh, outlay expenditures and we did see, see some operations, uh, for police sheriff contract services, the interwest and the Michael Baker contract. So those did increase overall. Um, again, uh, as far as expenditures, the single longest line item in the general fund is operations. And, um, as I mentioned before, that's your police contract, which comes in around a little bit over ten million dollars a year as of right now, which goes up about seven percent on the average every year. And that makes up about forty-three percent of our general fund expenditures. Uh, on the flip side, for the internal staff right now, uh, for the eighteen nineteen budget, we're budgeted at two point seven million. So just to put that in perspective, that's about, uh, slightly under twelve percent of the general fund expenditure. So you can kinda see this, the, the differences there on the particular percentages. This pie chart is intended to show you the general fund expenditures and I apologize, it's really hard to read. Um, normally what you would see is that orange portion that says police contract and the operations would go together as operations. But I wanted to show you what the police contract looks like in terms of the total general fund expenditures, which is at about forty-three percent, the largest piece of it all. Um, up there, the, the darker blue, the internal staff, again, two point seven, makes up about twelve percent of the, of the general fund expenditures. And the other operations again are, are the, um, everything else, Michael Baker and the interwest contracts. And everything else we budget goes into there. So kinda just the, the whole piece of the pie of where we stand. Um, but overall, in the past, staff has done a fantastic job of budgeting and looking at revenues and having revenues exceed expenditures every single year. As far as the cash in the bank is concerned, I'm very confident that we have enough to, to move forward with these changes. Um, and that, actually, here's, here's one more, uh, slide I wanted to show you. This is, this is a graph that shows sheriff contracts, uh, currently where we're at now and where we're projected to go over the next five years. So just doing some, some basic math at about seven percent. We're currently sitting at about ten point three, ten point two, just around there. By, uh, twenty-two, twenty-three, that contract's looking to be about fourteen point two million. So just to give you an idea of where that contract's going, um, ju- just to throw that out there and, and get a sense of that. I'll show Brian if you wanted anything.
I, I think that, it, it, the, the key is we, we really overestimate expenditures and, and we really underestimate revenues. Uh, and, and so, um, and, and yet every year we, um, have more revenues come in tha- than our expenditures and, and we're doing really well in that area. Um, and if you go back a couple of slides, um, that there, there was a big growth about two years ago in our, in our revenues. And it, it took us about two years before we saw any change in our staffing. And, and that was last year in, in the fiscal budget. Um, and we have staffed up. Uh, uh, as a result of that, we hired, uh, people like Ernie, um, and some of our communications team a- as well as, um, our economic development manager, uh, and, um, I'm probably forgetting a few others. But we're already starting to really see the impacts of having the right size, uh, or right sizing our staff to serve our residents and their, and our businesses and our community, um, and really, um, address the strategic planning goals that you have outlined. And as, as I promised, uh, when we went through the August twenty-fourth, uh, plant, uh, city council, uh, strategic planning and priority goals workshop, I said, let's identify the goals and whatnot, and then we're gonna identify what we're gonna do and we're gonna adopt the plan. And then I'm gonna come back to you and identify some staffing resources to help us deliver those plans in the timeframe that we are. And so that's what we're doing right here. And as you asked me last Ju- June, bring these all in one lump sum. So it's, don't, don't piecemeal staffing things. And so I, I'm bringing, we're, we as a team and a management team have evaluated it. So we're bringing it as one package to you tonight, um, to help us achieve these strategic planning and, uh, priority goals, uh, moving forward. And so hopefully, um, yeah, this is, this will help, uh, address some of the needs in the community, um, especially the community development director. We're, we're gonna have a lot of opportunities coming before us with the LEO Master Plan, with the city hall and the library and the Palopolis site, uh, potentially with the Offlatch property. Um, uh, we, um, we have a number of capital projects that we're also moving forward with. Um, we also need to update the general plan, uh, because when we adopted that, when we did the general plan update, uh, um, it was, um, basically a search and replace, uh, uh, often with Riverside County and the city of Eastville, because we didn't have a lot of funds back in twenty-twelve, uh, to do it. And interwest did a lot of heavy lifting to, to make that general plan our city. But we didn't really do the effort that, that we could, because that was back when the state took the VLF funds away from us the week before we were gonna launch the contract for the general plan amendment update, if you recall that. Um, and so there's a, there's a lot in the zoning and municipal code updates that need to be done to be consistent with having a city versus a county. And we adopted a lot of those things. So there's a number of strategic efforts that we can really create the vision where we can get a return on investment in higher quality development projects, um, and, and be more strategic in how we're, because every project from now on is gonna be an infill project in, in Eastville. Um, and, and just like we saw tonight, both of those projects are infill. We saw a greater community, uh, turnout for both of them and, and a lot more community engagement. And so we really have to have a high vision for what we want in a community. Um, one of the really cool things right now is we're just about to surpass ten billion dollars in property assessed value. And, and what I'd like to do is challenge the city, how can we create another ten billion dollars of assessed property value with the, the remaining fifteen percent of the land? And that is a really cool challenge to put before us tonight. And that's where we're gonna sit down with that community development director and figure out how do we do that? Um, because if we can do that, we would be sitting in a lot greater financial security. So, um, uh, with that, I, I will, uh, open it up to questions and comments.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Aguilar, do we have any public comments regarding this item?
We've had no requests.
Any discussion with council on this item?
Mr. Plot, I'll just kinda, maybe it's the elephant in the room, but I just kind of an explanation. Cause it just, when you first glance on the expenditures, maybe everyone saw it, right? You see twenty-three million versus twenty-one million in revenues. Usually you obviously don't wanna exceed your expenditures versus revenue. Can you, can we, and I know it's overestimating on both sides and underestimating on one side. But in the public eye, how, how do you answer that, that, that question?
Yeah, no, you, you're exactly right, um, Councilmember Plot. So the, the expenditures were over, um, uh, overproduced in that sense and the revenues were under. So what we do is we shore that up. Uh, mid-year budget, you're gonna see those numbers change. You're gonna see that, uh, come into place and, and you're gonna see a wide gap. As a matter of fact, um, um, I think when we closed out seventeen eighteen, we had about a eight million dollar surplus, uh, just on those alone. So I fully anticipate that to happen again. Part of it was also that we didn't include Costco. Costco itself could bring in another million, a million and a half. So that's that gap right there. And we purposely just made it lower because we didn't know what was gonna happen. Typically, we wouldn't do that. We'd always make sure it balances. But we also look at this as an agency, as a whole city, and that's just a general fund. So we have other, uh, funds, special revenue funds, other funds that feed into it, they go back out of it. So as a whole, we're always balanced. But when we first glanced, we look at that, it was, it was short just because of the, the way that we budgeted.
Thank you, Brian. And I, I just kinda wanted for the, I guess for the minute for the public, cause someone might be.
Of course. No, of course. Yeah, absolutely.
Any other comments or questions from council? I have a, uh, a question on the vacant positions, specifically like the assistant city manager. Are we still planning to fill that?
At, at this time, we are not planning to fill that. I, I've, I've spoken with many of you and, and I, I think the desire i- is that this community development director, uh, could help the city manager and, and, and many of the. Uh, could help the city manager and, and, and many of the development and public works projects at this time. And so what I'd like to do is, is leave that position funded a- and in the budget, uh, so that we have salary savings in there. Um, and, and so that we grossly overestimate our expenditures, but that I will not fill that position without coming back to the city council for ma- per, for permission to, to fill that position. What I want to do is leave it in there, um, should um, some of um, things in, that are in the hopper. Um, change over time in our, in our organization change, um, that we have the ability to, to quickly um, go out for recruitment. If, if, if that is, if, if the additional resources are needed, needed at the leadership level. Um, we, we have been very successful with creating a management team and empowering and engaging our team to step up and take on new responsibilities. Uh, and, and put people in the right positions of the bus in this organization. And it has been amazing to see the effectiveness of, of staff taking on new roles and responsibilities in this organization and, and leading, uh, leading these efforts. And so I think with, with all of them taking on additional responsibilities, uh, this, this last June. Um, and um, I, we can leave the assistant city manager position funded but vacant at this time.
Thank you. The only other question, um, comment that I have is, um. Regarding the change name on code enforcement to community enhancement, um, I just have somewhat of a concern that. The weight of a title of community enhancement and safety officer being able to enforce code. I know technically they're allowed to, but my concern comes from a resident. Um, having a community enhancement and safety officer come to them to enforce code rather than a code enforcement officer.
Right. A- a- and, and you bring up a very valid question and, and, and a comment and a concern and um. We are very much an aim frame rather than a blame frame organization and we would rather aim for compliance from our residents and our, and our goal of code enforcement is compliance. And our, our goal of the municipal code is, and the zoning code in everything is compliance. And so the goal of all those documents is to create, to enhance the quality and safety of our community. That's my job as the city manager is the health and welfare of this community a- and, and this organization. And so what, when, in sitting down with the code enforcement team a- a- as well as, as the management team and, and looking at. You know, like Rancho Cucamonga has a similar name, uh, uh, for, for their organization. Um, it's a, it's a softer white glove rather than a heavy, uh, um, heavy hammer approach uh, to code enforcement. Um, and what we're finding is that a lot of times residents are using uh, code enforcement. Um, um, to address the lack of communication between two residents or, or tension between two residents. And so when we go out there and we knock on the door and we look through the front window and we see somebody in hospice bed in the front window. And, and we, then we really quickly recognize that the reason why their lawn is overgrown is because they're cutting their budget because the breadwinner in the family isn't employed right now. And, and so that's where really enhancing the, the quality of the community and, and the safety of the community. And we're working with our, our pastors and our faith-based organizations to bring out social services to, to people that are in need in our community. Um, and we really encourage our residents to reach out and talk to each other, um, have crucial conversations with each other when there's challenges and then bring us in. Um, but are, are really our goal with code enforcement and with that team is, uh, it is to community enhancement and safety. Um, and when we're bringing the neighborhood watch program into that program, uh, as well as the cert, cert training, as well as the emergency preparedness. It's a bigger umbrella and we still have the arrow in our quiver to, to, to do code enforcement, but we don't want to start with code enforcement. And so, um, uh, we can, they still have the rights and responsibilities of a code enforcement officer and they can write a citation. Uh, um, and we can do this evaluation for six months and if we get a big pushback or, or a non-compliance. We can bring back the code enforcement name if, if, if it's really necessary, but I, I don't think that, that you, you, you can have the warrior or the guardian approach. I think right now in Eastville, we need to bring the guardian approach with code enforcement.
Thank you for the clarification. I appreciate that. Um, I would like to, I mean, i- if we can, just get feedback from our, uh, as, as we transition, if this gets approved. Uh, give feedback from our community enhancement and safety team just on, on how they have um, experienced their code enforcement to see if it is something that we need to revisit. The other thing is, is I would like to have this um, go before the public safety commission also, not necessarily, not the positions. But the name change as they're the ones that have more of the professional experience of dealing with, that's, that's why they're in the public, they're on the public safety commission to make those decisions. Um, but to help us out, just to, to give us guidance on, um. Code enforcement has to do with public safety also. So I think it'd be a good idea to uh, bring this before them too.
We're really looking for the code enforcement team to help out with our law enforcement. Uh, you know, uh, a, a lot of crime and uh, criminal activity and safety. Happens with the broken glass or the graffiti approach and it starts with that and it gets worse. So if we can, we can nip it. Uh, early on, uh, and get that stuff under control before it gets out of control and, and keep that stuff at bay in our community. Then it helps our law enforcement focus on the higher crime activity, um, and, and deter the, the small petty theft uh, stuff. And so we're really looking for our, our community enhancement and safety team to be eyes and ears in the community, observe things in our neighborhoods. Um, uh, keep a watchful eye on our community and have a presence out there in our community. And, and the more we can have a, a presence in the community. They're a lot more cost effective than increasing hours in, in the RSO contract. So we can't afford that right now. Um, and, and we can have a greater presence in our neighborhood with our community enhancement and safety officers.
I think these positions are, are where we're at in our city are, are well, uh, deserved and well-needed for our residents. Um, I, I'm excited for these. I think, uh, um. We've been kind of put, put on, uh, that we've, we've been proud to be the small and mighty, um, staff for a while. And I think we're getting away from that of being the small and mighty. I think Councilmember Plot.
Well, I, I, I like this. I mean, it's, hey, the first couple of years, that's exactly what it was, but. Is it okay if I, I have some, I wasn't going to talk about, but you brought it up. I, yes, it's a phrase that is very appropriate for the first several years, but now we need to start being a well-staffed and mighty department. And, and to put it in perspective, and Ernie alluded to it earlier, we were eight million dollars over our revenues from our expenditures, right? And we're not, it was almost twenty-nine million dollars last year in revenues. We're not going to go down eight million dollars to twenty-one. This is not going to happen. No one's not shopping anymore all of a sudden, right? So, um, with that being said, there's a phrase, more money, more problems. And as you, it's a sign, it's not just the VLF funds. There are three million dollars unallocated that's not to VLF. So the point is you, you have to staff up. You cannot operate. And the reason I'm bringing this up because there are several people coming through like, man, you guys are spending quite a bit and, and a half a million dollars in the increase in budget does seem a lot at first glance, but. When you're looking at how much revenue you bring in, now's the time to staff up. Now's the time to, I don't look at it as spending, I look at it as reinvesting back in the community. Providing better services. Hopefully we spend money to ent- entice economic development as well. Um, we've increased our public safety. All of which has come from the goals of our strategic planning, uh, meaning that we, that we had earlier, earlier this year. But I, I, I think the mindset has to be different and, and it's, we don't want to, we don't want to step over dollars to pick up dimes, right? We have to be smart in the sense of we have to staff up. If we're not, it will come to bite us. And we need to utilize those revenues. It shouldn't be sitting in a, in a bank gaining a, whatever, whatever banks goes now for savings account one percent, right? We need to be smarter in how we spend and how we invest our money. And I think, I, I believe this is going in the right direction and in staffing up appropriately. And providing the, the necessary services that our residents have served. Our, our businesses, our sixty-five thousand residents and growing, our developers need more than just a small staff. It, it, we are, we are, we are crossing that line. We are turning the page to becoming a much bigger agency and, and it, it calls for us. Not that we want to, it just calls for it and services. So that's kind of my two cents on it. I've had this conversation multiple times with some residents to explain. Um, just kind of put it to rest that, that we're, we're just turning the page. We're not the same anymore. And, and uh, and the reason why we're not the same. Is an eight million dollar increase in revenue shows that we're not the same. And, and neither should our staff should reflect a staff of ten people at one time. It's going to be a much larger staff and it should be. Um, anytime, you know, you grow and you, you look at your revenues, you grow, the first thing you look at is how am I going to staff for next year? Because it's, it's going to, you're probably going to duplicate that or come close to it or may, and hopefully you grow to that, but you need to grow with your revenues. Because there's more services that are potentially going to have to be provided because you're gaining more revenue. So I just want to put that, I gave a lot of thought into that if I was going to bring it up or not, but since you brought it up, I.
So, so Councilmember Plot, uh, you know, we're projecting out law enforcement costs here. Uh, one of the things that we're going to be doing i- is, is sitting down in the next couple of months and, and really projecting out. How is our organization going to need to grow and, and grow over the next few years? And we're going to, we're going to create a, a, a chart and identify where are our places we can have cost savings in that? Where do we need to have strategic investments? And what do we need to budget for two or three years out and really look in a visionary approach? Uh, um, out a few years so we can see this track record of what are we going to need to, to do to staff up appropriately? Um, as, as we um, become more of a full-service organization. And so, um, you know, this, this is a, um. You know, so, some of these cost increase, it costs, that pie increase where the general fund, it's just shifting a percent here or a percent there of that triangle. It's, it's not. Um, um, i- it's not really growing the pie a- as significant as it might be. So. Uh, and then what the other thing is, is with the, uh, community development director, a lot of, a lot of that community development director's time can be built back to the development community. And, and offset. So it doesn't have to be fully funded out of the general fund. So we just assumed that it was fully funded out of the general fund. But as they're working on development projects, just like our contract staff are working on development projects, they can bill to those. Uh, I never charge my time to the developers and I give them a lot of my time. Um, but you know, this community development director could charge their time. Um, because they would be working on some of those projects. So that would be another way to effectively use our budgets.
The only last, thank you, Brian. The, the only last point I want to address that it also what made this, this come as a shock factor as far as with the cost is. The thing we need to take into consideration, I cannot recall a time where we moved, we are moving at a pace way faster than I can ever imagine. There's more product and it's good. It's a good thing. So we're moving at a very fast pace. So things are all kind of coming up at once and part of it's due to our strategic planning that we have done, right? So kudos to your staff, Ryan. Kudos to you for, we're not holding out long time projects, projects we're putting together and they're coming to council. In a very expeditious way. And I think that's part of what we're seeing is, is this cost that seems relatively high. It's that it's all coming at once because the projects that we're doing requires staff. And it's all happening at once. So I, I appreciate the pace, but um, that might be the other shock factor to, to all this as well.
A- a- as your city manager, I, I'm here to balance the health and welfare of the organization and we have, we have performance, pace and people. A- a- and, um, if we, we have demonstrated that we can keep this, we, we can do a great pace here and we're delivering performance at record-setting time. Uh, with this, with the, 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 the bigger and mightier team, uh, um, here. Um, however, um. To, to keep that as a sustainable time, I, I'm, I'm realizing that some of my management team aren't taking their management leave and vacation time. Um, because we, we love what we do so much and, and we have a lot on our plate. We're so excited to be delivering this performance a- and results to the council. But then I'm realizing, wait, to keep a healthy organization, I need to make sure they're taking time off. And so to do that, I need to staff up appropriately. Uh, so that people are taking that time off, uh, and recharging their buttons. And so, um, um. And, and so really balancing that people component of the pace and the performance. And so I, I don't want to burn people out or redline them. Um, and so, uh, uh, some, some of my staff and I are here, uh, quite long days, um, to keep this pace and performance going. So. Uh, and I really appreciate the dedication of our public servants and leaders here in, in our organization.
Well, thank you. We appreciate the staff and all that they do. Um. There was something that I was going to say about this. Um. It just slipped my mind. The one thing that I would, I would like to, I mean. Oh, that's what I was going to say. You, you said it very well. You said that we were, that we are strategically investing. I think too often we look at expenses and we think of them as expenses. And you sometimes get a negative uh, feeling towards expenses, but as we are strategically investing rather than just expending, I think it, it puts a different perspective. Um, as we do that too, we are investing quite a bit and alas, as Brandon, uh, Councilmember Plot said, the last little bit, we've, we've moved at a fast pace. Um, I just cautious, caution us to be careful of that, that as we are investing, that we're making sure that we're, we're making the proper investments, the right time with those investments. Uh, because we don't want to get to the point that we're investing more than we're, we're receiving. Um, so with that being said.
I have, I have one of the smartest financial guys sitting two seats down from me and, and he's not going to let me even get close to that needle. So don't worry. He, 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 he holds me pretty, pretty close. So.
And that's why we have you here.
Yes. And we're, we're good, we're a good balancing act.
Great. With that being said, no further discussion from council. I'd like to solicit a, a motion for nine point four.
Approval.
Second. And that would be with going back to public safety commission on the name change as well.
It's already on the agenda for the public safety commission. They take them and share with them that we have, we now have a community enhancement and safety team that will incorporate the neighborhood watch program. Uh, in, in bringing it in to help with the administrative co- uh, administrative oversight and taking the neighborhood watch program to the next level. You guys have done a great job taking it to where it's been last year, but I think there's, we're just scratching at the surface of, of the potential of the neighborhood watch program. And its impact on our public safety in our community. And I, and I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing, bringing in the right person to help take that to the next level. So. Um, if anybody's out there listening, that's really inspired, uh, to focus on neighborhood watch and code enforcement activities. Uh, and enhancing the quality of our community and safety, we'd love to have you apply for the position.
And at the same time, if we can have a re-check, just check in six months or so, just to make sure that, um, that team is being.
I meet with the community.
Accepted by the, by the residents.
Our management team meets with the community enhancement and safety team weekly and, and, and we, we get insight every day on when they're out there on the streets. So.
Awesome.
Um, we're, we're hearing how things are happening and, and we'll keep, we'll definitely keep a pulse a- and work on, on that. So. Um, that we're very excited to give them the resources to do, to do their job even more effectively.
Awesome. And that motion was by Councilmember Tsari and that's with your approval, um, the full motion with additional information. And then a second was by Mr. Lorimore. Mr. Aguilar, please.
Councilmember Biao?
Aye.
Councilmember Lorimore?
Aye.
Councilmember Tsari?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Plot?
Yes.
Mayor Rigby?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Moving on to item number ten, city manager report, city staff reports. Mr. Jones.
Yes. Um, you, you're going to see a holiday letter come out from here, me here regu- uh, pretty soon. Um, in one of the, what is it? The Eastville News or something? The, the Eastville News December issue. And at the last paragraph, it's going to do a call of action for Eastville residents. We're going to be looking for thirty to forty-five residents that want to go on residence on patrol and, and be part of a, a residence on patrol where they volunteer a night or a day. Or, or some hours a, a, of a month, uh, whether it's one or two days a month or, or whatnot. Uh, where we double them up or, or put them in a, a resident on patrol vehicle. And, and it's a, it's this uh, ability for some of our residents that are really inspired for public safety in our community. Uh, to give back to the community and enhance the quality and safety of our community and, and also be another additional resource to the CSOs. And, and law enforcement in our community. And so we're going to be looking to pr- to create that program. And that's something that Captain Hedge and Lieutenant Martin and I have been working on. And these people will be focused just on Eastville patrol. So they won't be leaving our community. Uh, we'll be keeping them in our community and we'll be working on that program, uh, so that they can dedicate and, and spend time in our community. So. Um, that's one thing. I also want to thank, I think Ava's out there. Ava, um, um, a couple, was it a couple of months ago, Joe? That you asked, uh, for the military, uh, branch banners to be installed? I, I think if you go home down Hamner, you might see them tonight, um, because they were supposed to be installed today. So I want to thank Ava for jumping all over that. Uh, you guys gave us the ten thumbs up up there, um, and we went and, and ordered those and got those up. And so it's recognizing the branches of the military here. Uh, we are very proud of all of our people that have served in our community and, 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 and you being one of them. And, um, uh, Ms. Espinoza back there in the back being another one, um, um, and Mr. Bootsma and Man Mario. Um, so we have a number of veterans even in this room. Um, um, raise your hand if you're a veteran. Uh, uh, um, so, um. Um, but, um, I got you, Booth. I got you, Ike. Uh, um, but, um. So, um, that's just another page, uh, you know, we have, uh, the active service over there on, uh, what street is that? So um that's just another page, uh you know, we have uh the active service over there on uh what street is that? Archibald, we have our, our, our park, um and and now we have Hamner. So we're, we're getting. The west, the middle and the east uh uh of the city all covered on uh in the, in the community. So. Um our, I'm very excited, um especially with these recruitment positions that you guys approved. We just, our launch, we're, we're automating a lot of stuff to be more efficient with our time so that we can be more effective in serving our residents. And our NeoGov uh submittals, so no longer do people have to apply for positions by their chicken scratch. Or right, uh uh the nineteen eighties approach to applications. Uh we, they are now gonna be able to do this online and submit to jobs in the, in Eastville. Um so we're very excited uh for that. Um and then the crazy chicken, I mean the El Pollo Loco opened up and the drive-throughs all backed up. Uh um and we are very excited for their success over there. So um if if you haven't been to El Pollo Loco right there and 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 the. Smart and final Les Schwab Miguel's Junior uh parking lot or my dry cleaners down there. Go down and check out the crazy chicken. Um and then the League of California Cities is gonna be, where you are, the city of Eastville is hosting it. At the Community Center and I wanna thank Director Anderson back there for uh uh um uh waiving the, the fees for the Community Center. Uh appreciate that at, at the board meeting earlier this week. Um so that we can host all the cities in Riverside County on January fourteenth at the Community Center. Um and uh we are gonna try to pull off one of the best League of California Cities events ever. Um we are a- already uh looking at having some special guest speakers there and I'm not gonna spill the beans quite yet. Um but that League of California Cities uh event, it will be January fourteenth. Uh and then once again, I wanna thank our finance team for that amazing caffer. Uh the numbers are just through the roof. Um um and we are having a lot of great success uh creating revenue in our community. Uh um and delivering services to our residents. And so um with that, I'm trying to think. Olivia might have some other, uh she probably has a page and a half of up- updates.
Real quick, before she goes on to that, just to be noted on that uh that report that you're referring to that our finance team did. It received an unqualified. Help me out, Ernie.
Yeah, unqualified is actually a good thing.
Exactly, and that's what I wanted to note, that it's kind of, it's deceiving, you look at it like, holy cow, but that means that. The finance team has done everything how they're supposed to be and that they've gotten basically a, an A.
Set of procedures that the auditors followed, we have resolved conformity and everything was the way it's supposed to be. So that's, that's actually a good thing when you see unqualified, it's an A.
Great job to the finance team.
Er- Ernie is unqualified as a finance director.
Olivia.
I actually only have one thing to add. Um two things, Ernie can't go anywhere, he's with us forever. Um the second thing is that City Hall will be closed in observance of the holidays uh beginning on December twenty fourth. Through January first. Um and as a reminder, City Hall is closed on Fridays. So um that's all I have.
So if you need a building permit, a water heater fix or or permit, any of those permits, get them in by December twentieth, please.
Anything else from staff? All right, moving on to item number eleven. Um we're gonna change this up a little bit in how we do this, uh just to make sure that we're um. In compliance, we're gonna go through, I'm gonna go through and just ask for updates on the specific committees. And if you have an update, if you can share the update, if there's nothing, um then we'll move on, but we'll just go through each committee. So League of California Cities.
Yes, um we just had a uh state board meeting. Uh that was over in Garden Grove. While there, uh at the state board meeting, prior to that meeting, there was another meeting, which was a. Uh planning, uh strategic planning for the coming year. And um so there are four policy issue areas that the legal is gonna be focusing on. Those are escaping me, but I will email, I will forward those to you. Uh also associated with the league, we had a. We had our division meeting, uh at least the executive committee division meeting took place out in. Banning, thank you, thank you. And while there, it was, uh we, we. We actually did not have quorum unfortunately, so it was a fun drive for not being able to do much, but we talked. And uh shared about what went on at the um the state board meeting. Uh and and the main point of that meeting was really just to whittle down and focus on uh the, the coming year. Um but a lot of those have, just have to do with um big picture. One, one of them in particular had to do with. The uh tackling legislation that would provide cities uh with the resources necessary. To mitigate against possible wildfires. Um other areas that the, the league plans to focus on, uh our housing. Associated with that housing are is homelessness, addressing those issues, uh things and, but th- these are guiding principles. Uh overall, so ag- again, there are four of them and I I should have it in front of me, I'm sorry. Did not, but I will pass that along to city staff, which then can, and also council here. Um so that was. League of California Cities and um Brian stated it well, on the fourteenth of January, we're gonna be having. All of the different cities from the Riverside County Division coming to join us here. And we will have a couple of great speakers, so. And I'm really excited about the format of this, so.
Thank you, we'll keep it going with you if uh if there's anything from SCAG.
SCAG, um actually, you're gonna have to cover um that, the, the most recent uh thing that took place. Was the Economic Summit and that was in place of the regular um meeting that took place over there. Uh the, the regular uh monthly meeting. And um I I know that you attended that. Uh associated with that though, we are gonna be having a, I I sit on the Legislative Communications Membership Committee. And we're gonna be having that meeting next week, so more next meeting on that, but.
Do you wanna share? Thank you, yeah, just a quick update on the Economic Summit that was last week um for SCAG. Held in uh Los Angeles. They changed the format this time and they kinda went to a single speaker economist that spoke. Um and he kinda shared about the whole area, then they did a panel. Um the panel seemed to focus more on the, the medical industry. I personally would like to see them go back to the old format, um just because previously they went through basically. Region, state and the national economy, and I think that was um a little bit better as well as when they did their panels. And when they did their, their discussions, it was more general focused rather than um kinda this one seemed to be more of the medical industry. And for us out here, they even said that most of the medical uh stuff is in the Orange County area. Um so it doesn't apply to us as much here, but overall it was a good, it was a good summit, uh well attended. Um and it was, like I said, it was good.
We may know somebody that might be able to help with that in the back over there. That's awesome, thank you.
W R Cog. It was uh Adam, but uh Mister Joe.
I'd be happy to share whatever I learned at my first meeting.
Sounds good, thank you. R T A, Mister Plot.
Yeah, no, actually, there actually was one comment. We had our, kind of our tradition, annual tradition, I was not able to attend, but Ike was there, we do our. Our Santa bus ride on the R T A route, uh one of the routes that we take. So we go into the, uh we go down to downtown Riverside and then come back. So this time we got picked up in the Taco Bell right here, that stop, and then went all the way down to downtown Riverside and come back. So that was on Tuesday, but. As far as that, there's no other updates for R T A.
Great, thank you. Western Community Energy, uh as I mentioned earlier, I was put on, uh I was um. Put as a vice chair for that. Today we had a meeting, we discussed, they had a um public hearing for the implementation plan. That's gonna be su- submitted to the C P U C this uh next week actually. And once again, this does not. Guarantee or hold us into going with the W C E program yet. They anticipate that they'll purchase power probably around October of next year. And that's about the time that we will have to decide for sure whether we're in or out. Once we purchase power, we're kinda held accountable for the cost of the power that's purchased. For our use. Um so we'll continue to have updates, but right now it's just being implemented. And then the C P U C will come back with any um recommendations that they recommend for that implementation plan. Northwest Mosquito and Vector Control District, Mister Joe.
I have a meeting in two weeks.
Awesome.
It's been perfect, it's been pretty good lately, so.
Thank you, sir. R C T C, Mister Lorimer.
Uh I, I did not attend the last one, that was Mister Rush.
Perfect, thank you. Well, uh we look forward to a, a future. Um Western Riverside County Regional Conservation Agency.
Yes.
And uh Mister Lorimer, if you could give us your update and then in the future, this is gonna be Ms Yao.
Awesome. So um we see here, uh for the month of November. Um they're reporting the amount of land that was conserved or that has been purchased for conservation. And for perpetuity, uh is went from fifty nine thousand seven hundred and sixty to fifty nine thousand eight hundred and one. Or an increase of forty one acres. And that is through the purchase of land in the designated area in Riverside County. Um outside of that, there were some closed session items as to the purchase of further land, but can't be discussed until. Next month, which I'm sure Ms Yao will be able to report on. Uh every month they do a species of the month. And that can be a plant, that can be a bird, that can be a fish, all animals that are monitored within the area in which we live. One that they touched upon this month is the turkey vulture. So I'm sure you guys have seen them. They're the really ugly ones that are black with the red heads and uh. So it, it brought back some memories though, because I grew up down Temecula. And uh these birds ended up hanging out um on my property, on my, my family's property. And they lived in a tree and they would bring all kinds of interesting things back with them. They, they feed on decaying carcasses. And uh they're, they're, yeah, carrion. Um so uh uh one interesting fact though that we learned about them. Is when they feel threatened, they actually produce projectile vomit uh to keep their. Yeah, to keep their. Uh they, they nest in tall trees, mainly eucalyptus and um also uh they. They lay their eggs in cliff areas, so uh but as part of the. Migration patterns that they do, they come in flock, in flocks of thirty to fifty. And we had, it was kind of. Some people are superstitious, these birds are not necessarily um. Pretty and uh connote death. And so they, they are, they're doing well in this region, but uh leave them be, they have a job to do. They keep uh. Well, disease down by doing their job. So but if you ever live in a place, bring your, that has these roosting above, bring in your animals. Because I had a dog that would go and roll around and what they dropped from the trees and. Anyway, that, that's the report. That, that was from Mister Plot though, that's his favorite, right?
Thank you. Um J C S D's Parks and Commission, I know the last meeting, Brandon nor myself were able to attend and Mister Tsari filled in. I don't know if there was any thing from that meeting.
All your questions were answered. So if you remember what you wanted to know, whether it's the uh batter's bot or the uh.
Pitching mounds?
Yes, the pitching mounds, those were getting done. I'm sure uh Director Anderson, she knows, she was there, she uh told me that all these things happened.
Awesome.
I'll take your word for it. But uh no, it was uh rather uneventful, it was a good meeting, but uh. There wasn't any discussion. I know you uh have some other information on it, but.
There was uh just another question was regarding the snack bar for um the community park. And I believe that's going out for R F P soon or currently out, so.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you for attending that.
Absolutely.
Appreciate it. Um anything, council member Plot on that? J C S D, just part of that, J C S D did um recently did the winter uh Wonderland. Um event, another great event, appreciate all the events that J C S D does, that was a, a great time. This Parks Commission is also going to, makes it a little bit easier for, for Brandon and I, is going to a quarterly. Um meeting schedule. Um as of right now, that will be, I forget the next meeting. Is there not a meeting till February for that? Or? Okay. Perfect, thank you. Finance Committee, Brandon.
There's no appeal on that as well.
Thank you.
But we, we have, we have our next finance committee this, this next week, so.
Okay.
Next following week, yeah.
And if there's anything additional from council members, we'll start down with Mister, Mister Tsari.
Have a wonderful Christmas, everybody. That's all I got.
Ms Yao?
I don't have any report, thank you.
Mister Lorimer.
Merry Christmas, happy holidays.
Mister Plot? I just wanted to say thank you, um specifically to my colleagues up here for their vote of confidence. I look forward to serving our, our community this next year. Um I look at this position as um someone that has to lead the meetings. But we are a council and I enjoy, I enjoy being on our team. Um I think we work together well. Welcome, Ms Yao. I, I know that you'll enjoy working with our, our team here, um and thank you to staff. And uh wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays. There is a, a closed session item, item number twelve. And Ms Vega, will you please introduce this item?
Yes, we have one item of closed session uh for a conference with real property negotiators uh with respect to the property at thirteen to two hundred Citrus Street. Regarding the price and terms of purchase.
Thank you, this meeting is. Do we adjourn this meeting or not?
No, not, not yet. Report.
And we'll report if there's reportable action. And just for information, the next meeting of the Eastville City Council will be on January ninth, twenty nineteen. At six thirty P M in this meeting, or in this room.